Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're here for the Board of Standards and Appeals for Public Hearing for July 23rd, 2019. We'll begin with the special order calendar. Item number one, continued hearing, 751-60BZ, 105 New Dorplein, Staten Island.
Good morning. Mira Alpin from the office of Mira Alpin. We had submitted an adjournment request.
Right. When did we do?
If we could have a hearing on September 17th, we would appreciate that. There are 25.
That's an extension. Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. So that submission date would be August 28th for a hearing September 17th.
8:28 for 9/17. Thank you so much.
Item number two, 81-74BZ, 97-27-57th Avenue, Queens. No, this one, huh? Swear and cheat. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Thank you.
Good morning. Sandy Anagnostu representing the applicant, and I'm joined by Mr. Kevin By, the Vice President of Bogoba Foods, and Peter Lee, Construction Manager. I attended the board's review session yesterday, and I noted the board's comments. We submitted revised plans earlier this morning, which you most likely did not see yet, but based on the comments that were made in the review session yesterday, we revised the drawings to add on the plot plan, Sheet A 100, proposed new permanent structure. I know the board wanted it to be clear that this is a permanent structure. Also, in response to Commissioner Sheta's comment, we revised the Section AA to show the depth of the foundation of the proposed permanent structure as four feet because it was incorrectly shown as one foot foundation, and the four feet is in compliance with the New York City Building Code. Also, on Sheets A 104 and A 106 of the concrete block option, a note has been added regarding the type of block that's proposed, so it would be concrete block to be finished block or stuccoed block. And...
Good. Okay. That's good. So, but these were submitted officially this morning, right? So counsel, I know we have this rule that we don't want to do this, so, but it's only for garbage and closure.
I'll be clocking in the hard copies right afterwards.
Okay. But you're already sent to submit?
Yes, this morning.
And I'm noting that they're signed and sealed?
Yes.
And they're dated? This is the most recent date, 7/22/19?
Yes.
Okay.
Yesterday.
I'm looking at the plans, actually, and I see the correction for the foundation.
Right. It makes sense. Okay. Good. Thank you. So are there any speakers on this? I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on condition, no trash or recyclables to be stored outside of the approved structure, structure materials to be maintained and repaired, painted as appropriate. If it's not painted, then, you know, in other words, maintain the exterior finish and replaced as needed to ensure an attractive appearance. Okay?
Thank you.
Motion to what?
Motion to grant.
Grant. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
This application's been granted.
Thank you.
Item number three, 332-79BZ, 4320 Little Neck Parkway, Queens. Hmm? It's an adjournment. You don't have to swear in. Thank you.
Morning, Todd Dale for the applicant.
You wanted 10 weeks or something like that?
Hopefully. We just want to make sure that we have enough time to finish all the site work. They'd started it, but they're not done with it, and we figure if we get it long enough, we can be flexible with the board's calendar.
How about the end of October? End of October sounds more...
Perfect.
No?
Sure.
Because there's planting and...
And the paving.
And the weather's been impossible. You can't do paving when it's torrential like this.
That works out just fine for us.
Okay. That's a hearing date of October 29th, submission date of October 9th.
October 9th?
Yeah.
Yeah, but so if, with this one, if you need a little more time, maybe the submission date could be a week later, just because, you know, the paving...
I'll note it as October 9th with an asterisk.
I'm just concerned about this crazy weather. Sorry?
I'll note it as October 9th with an asterisk.
Asterisk. But our project manager considers you late on...
For your purposes, so the week after that is October 16th.
So do you want to put that in the vote sheet, October 16th?
Yeah. Say do that. Otherwise, you'll get an adjournment.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Item number four, 85-99BZ, 1106 Metcalf Avenue, The Bronx.
Okay, they also requested late October adjournment. I think in this case, it would be submit late October because they're doing a lot of physical work on the site, so submit late October.
How about November 19th hearing, October 30th submission?
Good. Yeah.
New cases, item number five, 14301BZ, 348 East 9th Street, Manhattan. The submission was made about the affidavit in response to the board's comments.
Yes, that's great.
Yesterday. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
With sign.
The only submission I saw was the affidavit. I didn't see a status report. Maybe...
You can do a verbal, Annie.
Morning, Madam Chair Commissioners, Marvin Mixner for the applicant. As was just mentioned, we did submit an affidavit from the owner to the effect that there will be no boarding of dog at the facility. In terms of a status report, we just managed to have a conversation with the asbestos contractor this morning to get a handle on where things stand. The inspection was done in April. The inspection resulted in a clean site. It's just now a matter of getting the paperwork put together with the PW1 and the ACP5 to follow the DOB.
Since April, you can't get an ACP5? It's a four-page form, fill it out, yes, no, yes, no.
I agree, but this is what we were told by the contractor. He assured us that he'll have it done within the next week or two.
Okay.
And the only other open items on the application are some old applications that have to be closed out and withdrawn. We're in the process of doing that. We only have a few left that have to be handled, and the reason for the delay on that is that we have to go back to the original applicant to get them either withdrawn or amended, and we're in the process, our consultant's in the process of doing that. That should also be accomplished in an extra number of weeks, probably a month or so.
Okay, so, so the only things that I see are filing an ACP5, and the sign-offs are not, it's not like you need an electrical sign-off or a plumber's sign-off?
No.
No. So the rest of it is just kind of getting the cleaning?
It's just paperwork. Yes, meeting with the DOB, making sure they can withdraw the application, or that we can get the original applicant to sign off on it.
Okay. Is that a problem? I'm asking these questions because it helps to determine how much time is a reasonable extension.
That should not be a problem. We don't foresee a problem with that.
Okay. So obtaining a C of O within a year is doable?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So let's say a year? Yeah, because it's been going on for really long?
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So are there any speakers on this? All right, so then I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant an extension for one year to obtain a C of O.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number six, 19397BZ, 2729 Great Jones Street, Manhattan. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions? Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair Commissioners, Project K Becker. We attended your review session yesterday. Last, yesterday afternoon, we submitted a revised statement which included the square footage in the first paragraph on page one. We also provided approximately 20 updated licenses, which are all current. They expire end of this year, next year, 2021, and as stated in papers, when we filed the application, all the licenses were current at that point.
That was submitted yesterday?
Yes.
Right. And it was submitted both...
By hand, hard copy in the afternoon and submission by email. Submit with confirmation.
Okay. Okay, good. All right, then. Are there any speakers on this? All right. So, and you wrote the total area of the PCE. Could you just say what that is?
11,941.
11,941. That's what it says on the plan.
It says on the plan, correct. It's added to the last paragraph. It's the PCE occupies the total of 11,941 square feet of floor area shown in the plans submitted with this application.
This is the zoning floor area, right?
No.
No, no, that's gross.
It's floor area.
With PCEs, we do gross.
It's PCE floor area.
Yeah, because PCEs are often in sellers and sub-sellers, so that wouldn't work. It'd be like 200 square foot PCEs.
It's just floor area. Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Oops, sorry. Upside down. Item number seven, 189-12BZ, 98 Montague Street, Brooklyn. Raise your right hand first. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to board member questions? Okay, and then sign. Yes, sign. Okay.
Pat Sullivan from Kramer Levin for the applicant. As background here, just to note, this is a building built in 1909 as a hotel, which was used for many years by the Jehovah's Witnesses as a community facility. The variance obtained was to allow the conversion of the building back to transient hotel. So the board asked yesterday why we're here. So just to clarify, the Department of Buildings has confirmed that the standard for substantial construction of a variance is the same as for zoning vest, meaning that for a new built building, substantial construction is obtained when foundations are complete. But as noted here, we have a conversion of an existing built building. And for conversions, there's no standard that has been articulated other than full completion. So because we have never obtained a C of O for the entire building, we believe that we still do need an extension of time.
But, so, but the TCO indicates that only like the restaurant is...
Right. So there are 14 floors in the building. There was a TCO obtained for the lobby areas and floors 1 through 12, so almost all the rooms. There's some additional hotel rooms on the 13th floor, and then there's a restaurant space both on the top floor and on the ground floor. So the last TCO expired in February, and so we need to do the work to reinstate that TCO, and then obtain a TCO for the 13th floor hotel rooms, and then also do the work to build out both the ground floor and the top floor restaurants.
Okay. Seems kind of extreme to me, but you're here anyway, so you might as well. You're here. Okay, so the update is just, as you say, to finish out those few parts of the building?
It's to reinstate the TCO that had previously been approved and then do mainly, it's the two restaurant spaces on both the ground floor and the top floor that need to be built up.
Okay. All right. Are there any speakers on this? Okay, I don't think there's anything, any other issues. So what amount of time, though, are we talking about?
The applicant believes that six months is all they need. I would be more comfortable with nine or 12.
We'd do a year because that's kind of, six months is just too tight. You'll come right back because someone didn't fill out a form. So, okay.
One year. One year.
Yeah. All right. Are there any speakers on this? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant for one-year extension.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item, Appeals Calendar, item number eight, 2019 13A and 2019 14BZY, 11-31 Ryerson Street, Brooklyn. Hmm? Oh, okay. Well, it says 31. I don't need, you don't need to be sworn in. Appeals don't get sworn in.
I'll tell the truth anyway.
Okay. Well, you're a lawyer. You're supposed to, anyway.
Thanks, Natalie. Good morning, Madam Chair Commissioners, John Ignatius Bean for the applicant. As you know, this is a set of companion cases seeking recognition of a vested right. I was at yesterday's review session, and I'm prepared to speak to the items that were raised. Some of them we may need, or we will need more time to respond in writing. Before I go question by question, I thought it would be helpful to just lay the groundwork for the two cases, because it felt a little bit like we were jumping around a bit, and I think that's just because you have five commissioners and people have different ideas of what they're impressed by or unimpressed by. And so let's just, let's just talk about statutory and the findings. First issue is the lawful permit, and before you even determine whether it's lawful, you have to determine what kind of construction it is. And there was a question yesterday, and I think it was my fault, in one of the revised statements, I referred to an enlargement, but in the papers, it should be clear, and in the plans, it should be clear that it's an extension. It's relocation of floor area. There's no increase in floor area. Here, it's a non-compliant building, so it's not...
So it's not considered an enlargement?
That's correct. It's an extension. It's in accordance with the, even though it's a non-compliant building, the new construction is in accordance with the underlying district regulations.
So, so the definition of enlargement is an increase in floor area, and it's not an increase in floor area, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay.
Right.
So therefore, it's other construction?
Then we're other construction world, and we have to complete the building, as Patrick before me was talking about. The standard is completion if you're other construction. And so in order, so once you're other construction, you must have a lawful permit, and you must complete. If you don't complete, you can come to the board under the statute and prove that you've made, you've performed substantial construction, and you've made substantial expenditures. That's the statutory. The common law is very similar, but there's an additional component, which is serious loss. Talk about that in detail. Commissioner Otley Brown had several comments on that. But as we'll talk about, we think that the common law standard is not quite so constrained when it comes to what the permit is, and so we still, in terms of substantial expenditures, you can include soft costs. Really, the common law vested right application is, I would say, more forgiving to an applicant than the statutory application. I think the cases bear this out. We cited a number of cases in our papers, and we can, we can flesh that out further in a written submission, but we think that it's pretty clear, based on the board's precedent, that a common law vested right is easier to prove, easier to be eligible for. So yesterday, a lot of conversation was, had about the permit. What is the permit? And the two questions that I was able to distill, and if I get these wrong, of course, tell me, but the question is, number one, whether the ALT 2 and ALT 3 work would, can count at all towards the vested right findings, even though there's an ALT 1 permit that actually proposes the use that is no longer as a right. And the second part of this, and it's related, is whether, if it, whether it's counted or not, if only work after the post-approval amendment had been approved, is actually work that goes towards the vested right. And so on the first point, we would submit, and we think that other jurisdictions would bear this out, with respect to the common law, the permit has to be a more flexible concept. In this case, if you look at our ALT 1 plans, we couldn't have done anything under our ALT 1 plans, even if we had had it eight months before or nine months before, because all the work we were doing was window replacement, facade work, asbestos abatement, interior demolition, roof work. All this work was filed under separate permits for administrative convenience, but it was all in the vein of getting the building ready to occupy. Now, initially, it was, well, with respect to the window and facade, those were actually filed before an alteration type one had been filed at ALT, office or hotel. That work, that was necessary work that my client, the owner, began almost upon acquisition of the building. This is stuff that had to be done.
Sorry, just with that, when you filed, when your client filed the ALT 2 and 3, was there any use described in the ALT 2 or 3? I mean, for instance, you can, it was a warehouse building. Was it, was it filed as a warehouse building?
It may have been identified. I'm sure it was identified as the existing use, which was warehouse. I'd have to look at the construction documents to know exactly how it was described.
Yeah, that's something we can check right here.
But in any case, the work itself, the windows and the facade work and the interior demolition, all of that would be the same work. So we submit that even though for administrative convenience, we separated the permits out, we think that the overall equities, I think, lie with counting that work or counting a portion of that work towards our ultimate goal and our right to have a hotel which laps on December 20th. But we can check those documents, and if it's helpful, you know, we can submit additional information. We also submit, I don't know if anyone, no one commented on it, but we had a series of charts that showed how the various applications overlapped over time. That was something that the project manager asked for, and I think it goes to the question of whether or not there was this good faith reliance. So, and I think that goes to Commissioner Otley Brown's point from yesterday. The building, the owners knew that hotel was as of right, office was as of right, and they also knew that the building needed substantial work. So I think we would urge the board to take the position that, and be mindful of the fact that hotel was as of right the whole time we were doing all this work, even though we didn't necessarily have a permit for it. The permit is sort of the threshold issue. It's the right that we're seeking to vest, of course, but I don't think you need a perfect nexus between what the permit authorized and the work that was performed at the site.
So that's, that's, in terms of the materials that you have to give us?
Yeah.
You need to show some kind of case law or BSA practice that has encountered a similar situation, because what's obviously concerning here is the potential for, let's say, a more, let's say it was a more noxious use, you know, something, my favorite, the fat rendering plant that becomes illegal in the district, right? And the day before the fat rendering is no longer permitted, someone decides to file for fat rendering and completely undoes what the protections are.
Sure. I think we can distinguish ourselves from that race to the, race to the DOB situation.
Right.
And I think we'll, one of the cases I cited in my papers originally, I think it's 247 13A, is an appeals, common law vested right. And in that case, and in all the cases, and to some degree, it may be boilerplate, but it also has a legal effect, the board authorizes an extension or reinstatement of the permit and all related permits. And so, for example, if you're building a new building and you don't finish the foundation, you come here, you get the vested right, there are many applications you haven't even filed yet. Fire alarm, for example, you haven't filed, and no one filed, almost no one will file the fire alarm drawings under the ALT 1 or the NB. They'll file them separately. So the fact that you're allowed to install your fire alarm in that building, even though that permit didn't even exist, I think is supportive of this idea. It works backwards and forwards to some degree. I think other jurisdictions, and I'm told from practitioners who work outside of New York, that the concept of permit isn't, it isn't as sharply delayed as it is in New York. Again, you know, any professional that I've spoken to will say that that's for administrative convenience. They want this professional to be responsible for that scope of work, sign off that job, and not be relying on any other scope in order to complete his task or her task. So...
But that, but that related permit thing, I don't think there's really a dispute about the concept of it, but if it's a related permit for the same use, for example, the office building, if the office building had needed to vest, right? No question that all of those permits that you filed, all those ALT 2 and 3 permits, are related to the build-out for an office building, right? But the problem is the switch at the 10 days before.
Would it make, I guess this is something we probably have to discuss more, but would it make a difference if there was no relationship whatsoever to the ALT 1? So the window facade work says window replacement. The drawings show window replacement. Everything relates to the physical work being done for the windows, and there isn't even a use identified. And if it's identified, it's in some block somewhere. It's clearly not the purpose of the application, to establish any use, preserve any use. It's simply work that's related to this building. It seems to me that work, it doesn't say, you know, office windows. It says window replacement. It doesn't say facade. The facade needed to be redone no matter what, so the facade, the facade work goes to the hotel. It goes to the office. It goes to, if it, you know, 20 years from now, that facade will, maybe it encloses some sort of work space for artists or light manufacturing in. It's untelling what will happen, but that facade work was necessary for the renovation of the building.
Right. But then that part goes to the, to the loss question?
It goes to the loss question.
If you can go either way, what's the difference, which way you go?
Well, it goes, we think that that work is important because it shows substantial construction. We think it goes, the money that was spent is substantial expenditures. The serious loss, maybe that work doesn't necessarily go to serious loss because maybe it should be excluded. And I think the serious loss that we relied on, and we can talk about that, I was gonna have a whole section on that, but we can just move to it anyway. There isn't a serious loss for doing the facade work, and there isn't a serious loss for doing the window work that needed to be done, or the roof work, for example. The serious loss here is the loss of the right to have a hotel as of right. Yesterday, there was conversation around EULAR and the possibility of that, and I think it's, you know, I appreciate that Commissioner Otley Brown suggested that. Those are lost costs that we would have to incur if we were to not be able to continue with this permit. If we wanted a hotel, we would have to go through EULAR. We recently completed a EULAR with this client. It took almost three years. Now, that was a bigger project, it was a little more complicated, but special permits are a minimum of two years right now. It's just a busy place to file. And so, there's the cost of holding the building during that period, it's the uncertainty. It's a special permit, so it goes to the city council. The city council might not approve it, they might not like it, they might feel like this is exactly what they didn't want. It's a hotel in an M1 district, we just amended the text, should we approve this one?
But actually, it sounds a little ironic, but I think you might have written the memo that, that, about serious loss and, and the substantial work being related to each other, so that the substantial work, the loss, is the loss of the substantial work. So to put that in perspective, let's say there was a lot of interior build-out done, and the only way to bring this to an office use and as of right use would be to gut, gut the building and remove from it millions of dollars' worth of improvements on the interior. That's the measurement of the serious loss. That's why, when you look at the, the shell, the shell itself go, it could go anywhere. You could put almost, you could put fat rendering in that, except I think it's the wrong zoning district.
I think it's Alt 3 for the fat.
Right. But the, but, so you could put anything in there, but, so the question is then, what are the improvements that you would need to remove? That's a serious loss, not that you could get more money if you converted it to this other thing.
So, I'm sorry. I certainly agree that that's how you would measure the hard cost, serious loss, and we have the partitions that we've erected, and there may be some other work, but not a significant amount of hard costs that were, will have to be undone. It's really here, I think, a soft cost issue. It's all of the permitting, all of the undoing, all of the reverting, and then, of course, the ULR costs and the uncertainty tied to that financing, the costs that are permitted under the, under the common law framework. But I completely agree that in terms of measuring the hard cost component of the serious loss, we don't have a lot here.
Okay. So really, what it's down to is the soft costs?
That's right.
Okay.
I think we found a way to, Commissioner, Madam Chair, you, you spoke yesterday about involving DOB in, in this concept of what does, what is the permit? What, what happens to the permit? Does it retroactively, let's call it legalize, or validate everything that's been done at the site? Is it, is it as if, is it as if that permit that you have, when you file your post-approval amendment, is it as if that were in effect from the, the initial date of the permit? I actually don't know if they've answered that direct question. They've done a lot of, they've pushed a lot of paper about vested rights and about lawful permits. I, I know that you can amend a permit that's been vested, you can amend, and obviously you can verify this with council, you can amend a permit, a vested permit for any use that would have, or bulk that would have been permitted at the time. So there's flexibility. In that way, I think DOB has recognized that you're almost vesting a zoning scheme in some ways. You're vesting a series of rights when you vest a permit. So I'm not sure that, that, that doesn't really, you know, answer all the questions that we have before us, but it's instructive on, on the, the nature of the inquiry insofar as we did a bunch of work, we spent a bunch of money, we had permits, we had a lawful permit that DOB confirmed on the date that the text changed, and now we, we lapsed because we didn't do enough of the work. So if you, in a more holistic analysis, we think that DOB position is, maybe it's on the scale of the, of the applicant to some degree.
But I think DOB's letter said that the permit was issued on 12/11/18, right? That's their letter stating you have a valid permit. So they're stating in their letter, and I don't know if they actually thought about the ramifications of writing a letter like that, but they're basically stating that you only have nine days in which to do any work that's related to the hotel.
Well, I, I think it would, what would be the process for getting a little more information from them on that point, or is that something that you think is necessary?
Well, you know, often on these cases, DOB, or not on these cases, but on our cases that involve a DOB thing, DOB gets involved, right? That might be something where you reach out to DOB council and ask for more clarification on that, because that was, that was kind of an easy letter for them to write. They didn't have to think about whether it looks back, right?
Right, well, I've written those letters. In my experience, you, you look at the last issued permit, you, you, you ask the examiner to confirm that there, there are no incurable errors or fatal flaws or zoning problems with the permit. The examiner comes back, she says it looks good, and you write the letter. It's, it's not a searching inquiry by council's office, it's more, it's more administrative.
Right, understood.
They certainly can do a more searching inquiry, and they will if we ask them. If we ask them the question of what does it mean when you amend a permit? What is the legal effect when you amend a permit? They'll answer that. I know there's another, I'm aware of another hotel that has different facts, but it seems to support the, the notion of relating back, and I think maybe, it might, there are public records on it, but it'd probably be best to speak with them to confirm that it actually supports the, what I'm saying here. The bottom line is that it was a hotel, let's call it 20 stories for the purposes of this discussion, they had a permit, but, and they had the permit, if you look at this law, it has the special set aside, the April 23rd date. You had a permit at all, April 23rd? This was sort of a get out of jail free.
That's the 27th Street case, yeah.
Okay, maybe, so, so for that, so then if you know the facts of that one, they didn't have the permit for the whole building, because they hadn't closed on all the development rights. So the question was whether all that bigger building, what is that, do you get to vest that whole building, or do you vest the, the sized building that you had when you, when the, at 423, that effective date? And I think the DOB has found that you vest the entire building because you had a permit for the use, even though you didn't have a permit for that extra five floors of the use, because you didn't have the floor yet, you didn't have the development rights.
Right.
It's, again, it's another, it's second, it suggests to me that there is some flexibility, and certainly this board has broad discretion to recognize the need for flexibility in the realm of vested rights.
So it's actually a nine-story hotel, and it's important that you bring that up? That's the 27th Street case, and I, I think it's 300-08A?
Right. Oh, I think we're actually talking about, mine is 1185 Broadway.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's a separate case, yeah. It's a much taller building.
Ah, okay, so there's a different one. So it's, it was affected by the same April 23rd deadline, okay? So there's another case?
Okay.
That I think you are, you know about, it's a 27th Street, 300-08A, and that one had a different set of facts, but they didn't make the permit deadline of April 23rd. And the reason that I wanted to bring that up, since you just brought up this same subject, is that in that case, subsequent to the vesting, subsequent to the zoning change, there was a modification to the building. And that was discussed at the board hearings, and the modification to the building was permitted to be retained. So whether or not that was board oversight, whether or not that's part of a, of kind of board history or policy, there was discussion about whether you could even, either prior to or subsequent to a vesting, change the project that was the subject of the permit, that is the basis on which the permit vests, right? So that, so if, you could look at that case, but there's probably case law or DOB, I mean, BSA practice beyond that, that led to the conversation that occurred surrounding that case. You won't see much of it in the resolution, but I actually listened to many of the hearing videos, and there was a lot of discussion about that then. And, and it was a minor change, and maybe that was why it ended up going forward. It may not have affected the serious loss question, but there was a conversation about even removing that work, and then a conversation about, no, that work's allowed to stay because it's still consistent with the zoning. So, you know, that's.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, that sounds like it may, at least, you can argue by analogy in some way.
So, and the 23 hotel was what, 11 what?
1185 Broadway.
1185 Broadway, okay.
So I guess I already talked about the serious loss question, although I don't know if I fully hit it, Commissioner Oatley Brown, the issue of adding more, more information on the ULR process and what would, what would be required to seek a special permit?
But so I'm not.
Including in writing, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I'm not sure that the, that's really the question about serious loss, but looking forward, like what you would have to do to legalize it, I think the question is, what would be so bad about not, you know, let's say, what are you experiencing from the loss of the, the work that's done inside the building? Because what you're looking, what we were given was appraisals, that the, that the hotel's just more valuable, but that's actually not the question. The question is, why can't you revert to an as-of-right use, right? So that's always the question on these vesting cases. You know, if the building were overbuilt by three stories, what would be so bad about tearing down the three stories? Lots of bad stuff, right?
I mean, that, I agree that that is a component of it, but I, I read the serious loss a little more broadly to include, what is the loss from not being able to proceed under the permit that you had? We had a permit for a hotel. So even if we don't have a bunch of costs for physical work necessarily, we have a measurable loss. It's an appraisal, we get that, you know, appraisals happen and they have certain assumptions, but the loss happens the day that you can't do the hotel. It doesn't necess, and that, it's a measurable loss. Now, you can argue whether the appraisals were.
Prejudice is you, though? Are there a loss that you're prejudiced by?
I don't think we have to show prejudice, I think we have to show the loss with respect to that finding. And I think it, I mean, I don't know the building, but it would be prejudicial to lose $11 million, what I thought I had in $11 million.
Well, not if you, I mean, I suppose the, the issue, you know, when you're starting off on something and you have lenders, and the lenders are expecting the development of a building, perhaps that, and you're losing all your funding or something like, I don't know whether that even fits into the story, right? Because, and that's something for research, right?
I'm sure that's part of, yeah, I'm sure that's part of the analysis on the soft costs that we would incur. We'd have higher, probably have higher fees for lending, because there's so much uncertainty around the project. If they still want a hotel, if we're obligated to deliver a hotel to the, you know, and the lender's gonna foreclose, and we have to now go through ULR, that's a lot of uncertainty. So we probably pay a higher interest rate while we're doing that. So in that way, yes, it would be prejudicial.
Right.
The cost more.
But the reason for, it's not clear at all why the office building was abandoned, right? Because the location's great for an office, the building is great for an office, and it might have occurred to somebody, hey, this would also make a great hotel, look how great the building looks now that it's getting all cleaned up. So, or the neighborhood's changing and it can support a hotel, so why don't we try that one out? Because there are times when building a hotel is just a bad idea, right?
Sure.
That the market won't support it. Did you want to?
Is this the way that we should think about it? I believe if we go that route, it's gonna, I'm afraid that it's gonna switch to some sort of, like a variance case.
Right.
It's a use waiver based on a variance, if, if we go that route.
No, no, it's, it's really just to establish, the, the issue is, is there a, we only have two things that we actually have to look at, right? Or three. Is there a permit that's valid, right? That's the, for me, that's, you only, if the permit's only good for 10 days?
Yes.
Then what work could you have possibly counted in the 10 days?
Yes.
If you're allowed to look at soft costs, those always occur before the permit is issued. So soft costs are allowed, the courts have indicated, courts, that's been allowed. So then, and then the question is, what would be, so what would be the bad thing for you if you had to, if you go back to office in terms of the hard and soft costs? Whether you look at, what I'm, you could, I think you could talk about it, but I'm not persuaded that talking about how to turn it into a hotel is, is really relevant, because most of the time, there isn't a ULR option, right, on these things? And by the way, you could still go for the ULR option, even if we said.
Right, well, in theory, there's always a ULR option, right?
Yes.
Because there's a, there's a text amendment or a down zoning, and then you could go right back to city planning and ask them to rezone your property.
Right, so, so maybe it's not relevant that you have to go to ULR, so it's, it's either you make the vesting findings or you don't. And if you don't, then you can go, if you really care about building a hotel, you go to ULR, because that's an after-the-fact issue, right?
Yeah, I see that. And, and just to be clear, I think the way that, the construct that you just set forth with respect to the common law case, we still think we probably are within the, the case law. You noted yesterday that very little has been enough in the, under the common law for a vested right. So even if we only include the work that was done subsequent to our hotel permit being in place, we include the soft costs, and we show serious loss related to the work that we would have to undo, which would be the work we did with the partitions, and perhaps some other things that we have to look at.
Right.
We still think we probably are within the standard that's been set forth in New York.
And what is the standard? I think we have a memo that talks about 5% is the minimum, right? So, and then the next question of that is, which is really weird, it's, it says 5% of the total project cost. It's a memo that looks at cases, so you should be looking at the cases?
Right.
To, to see if they're, if the numbers have shifted. But it talks about 5% of the total project, and then that's another mind-bender. What's the total project if you're not allowed to count the Alt 1 and Alt 2 costs, right? I mean, Alt 2 and 3 costs.
Yeah.
So I'm not even sure how to do that, that for you.
And I'm not sure, I'm not sure of the third component he spoke about, which is the undoing of what was done. I, I believe the only two components that could be considered in, in this amount that's gonna be checked, again, is the 5% or whatever, is whatever is done within the 10 days from the date that PEA was issued to the effective date. This is component to it. And the other component is the soft cost, because it precedes that. Anything else, for example, when, when they started construction, in the statement of facts, it mentioned that the owner directed the construction team to work on-site on a hotel, not an office building. Should they count the cost for that kind of work from, from the day they started to the effective day, or to the day they got the permit?
Right.
In my opinion, I don't think it should count. Whatever is done, starting the PEA approval to the effective date, this is part one. Part two is the soft cost, undoing and the, where prior to the permit approval for the hotel shouldn't, shouldn't be counted, accounted for.
Right.
Can I just add?
Yeah, yeah.
I think we need to parse it out a little bit more. Since from the time the work started, a use such as office and a hotel was permitted, so the work that was being done would have been permitted for a hotel use, whether they got the permit for it or not, that's irrelevant, because the zoning allows it. So they could have started a lot of the interior work in anticipation of putting a hotel up there. Now.
Right, and then filed the PEA afterwards.
Filed the PEA afterwards, that is totally permitted.
That's, yeah.
I'm not saying it's not permitted.
No, no, so therefore, we have to be careful as to what we count towards that, because if you're saying we can only count the component of the work that is done within the 10 days of, since the issuance of the permit, and the soft cost, and not the work that was done before, I will be concerned with that, because I think technically, you would be allowed to do this work on as-of-right to build a hotel and file a PEA afterwards.
Provided that you file a permit for it, and you get a permit for that. Let's say.
No, no, the way, sorry, I just wanna add how it actually works when, in terms of filing at the Buildings Department. As long as the work that you're doing, especially on an interior work, it's a little harder where it's the actual new construction, but on interior fit-outs, you can be laying partitions and all that, so, so far, there's no plumbing in the place. So you don't even need a licensed plumber to be working on where the lines are going, for which you would need a permit, right?
Yes.
In order to be able to put those lines in, or the electrician and so on. But this is just studs. You can put those stud partitions anywhere, and then during the course of it, you can be filing a post-amendment approval, because eventually, the inspector's gonna wander into the building and say, hey, what's going on here? This doesn't look anything like the approved drawings. And they'll, they'll issue a violation, the work doesn't look like the approved drawings, but not a stop-work order probably, because it's really just interior partitions, right? It's not a hazard or anything. So move the partitions or file a PAA. So that's, that's another question, maybe in terms of what is the board looked at in the past in terms of that sort of easily cured, cured by a PAA? Because construction projects never get built the way the drawings say, right? The bathroom needs to move 10 feet, it's not big enough. Like constantly, there's changes, and you're never filing in advance of making the changes. You're making the changes and then filing the post-approval, and in so many jobs, it's an as-built you file. You don't file anything until you're done, right? On, on interior jobs, which this is, this is an interiors job, right? So that, for me, that's the, I agree, that's, that's the hard part, and so I think that that's something that you need to address. It's like, yeah. But, but so, to be so strict about when the studs went down, I, I have a little trouble with that too, even though our standard is, on the easy cases, this is a much weirder case, right? On the easier ones, standard is, the day you get the permit, all the way up until the day of the rezoning, that's all you can count, nothing before, nothing after, and nothing on weekends if you didn't get a after-hours permit, et cetera, right?
Right, that's sort of the standard vesting case.
Yeah.
And those are pretty easy, because they either, they completed 86% of the foundation, they stopped, they have the photographs, they weren't working contrary to any stop-work orders, they weren't doing anything else wrong, the permit was fine, and then they come here and say, please let us continue. It's interesting they were talking about that, because the foundation is just a very small part of that great new building.
Yeah.
And so, if, if we were to just think about this, set aside the permit issue about how many permits, what are the numbers, what counts, just the equities of it. If, if it is equitable to acknowledge the right to continue on a new building that's contrary to zoning, when you only completed a portion of the foundation, and it seems to me that it ought to be equitable to allow a building that's being converted where 46% of the, I'm sorry, 42% of the soft costs have already been expended, and... of the, I'm sorry, 42% of the soft costs have already been expended, and substantial amount of work in terms of all of the prep work, so to speak, that's needed to install the issues. It seems to me that the equities are on the side of allowing us to continue, just in terms of comparing, trying to make apples to apples out of new building versus conversion. There just aren't a lot of conversion, appeal, vested rights cases.
Right.
It's almost always a new building or substantial in large. That's our read of the precedent. Outside of New York, I think it's a lot of subdivisions, it's a lot of plant approvals, it's a lot of language that it's hard to fit into our framework unless you step back and think about what's really going on, which is, did the owner reasonably rely? Did they have a permit? Did they have permits that were directed at doing the use that is no longer permitted? It'd be different if we did a bunch of work down a, sort of, a dead end. If we had, did a bunch of work in the direction of building a hospital, and we have to rip it all out, and a hospital still has a right, but we're asking you to consider that because we spent money, you know? We're not asking for you to count anything that isn't necessary for the operation of the hotel. It's simply a matter of where the permit number is correct. Now, if we have to overget, of course, we put it all under the same alteration, because then there's no question, you have drawings within the same job number, in the same permit, so no one's questioning which permit we're talking about, and then it's an easy case, because now we're just talking about a percentage of the work that was done. And, you know, going back to only counting a portion of it, and only that portion that was done after the PAA was approved, it seems to me that's sort of a, in some ways, a worse precedent to set than the precedent that acknowledges the way that permits are filed in New York, the way that construction is done in New York. I think we can incredibly show that what we did was well within the work and the cost and the loss, as long as we're not hemmed in by the narrow, narrow definition of permit. Now, the statutory may have a narrow definition, because it actually has a statutory definition. I think it's, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna misquote it, but I think 1130 does have a definition of lawful permit, and I think it's all the construction necessary. And so I don't know if that's all the construction necessary for the use, but certainly it couldn't mean all the construction, all the construction, because as I said, there are cases out there where you haven't even filed for certain work types when you are at the board getting a vested right.
Right.
So it's gray.
I think actually, since it's written in the zoning resolution, and the planners probably, and architects probably weren't aware of the details of how DOB issues, they're probably thinking of the new building or the Alt 1 application, and that's it. Unaware that without a plumbing permit, there's no plumbing, right? And so that's how I think the case law ends up picking up the word related permits, and allowing those to be included and to be filed later or at different times, because that's the way the work is done. But I don't actually think the drafters of design resolution were into the fine tuning of how DOB functions today, and who knows how it functioned in 1959? I mean, I don't, you know?
Hard to say.
Yeah. So, okay. So I think, did you have anything else you wanted?
That's, that's all I had prepared.
Okay. Anybody want to add anything? Okay. So you can see there's kind of a hurdle, and it's been suggested also that to allow such a last minute change in use would set a bad precedent, if you could look at why that might be not or would be a bad precedent. So another, and a reason for that is, like, yesterday we played a number of, for examples. Can you, can you kind of play this out to see how this might work in other situations?
Okay. Maybe I can work with counsel a little bit on what would be the most illustrative, because obviously I can imagine, I can think about the DOB precedent. There's a case out there that says, if you didn't get your demo permit and you have an existing structure, then your new building permit is not a lawful permit. Even if you did work, if you illegally demolished the building, even if you did some work on your new building permit, you cannot vest, you don't have a lawful permit. That's a fatal flaw in your vesting case.
Right.
Something like that, it's out there. I don't know, there may be an analogy somewhere with, you know, permits and the nature of the permit, and I'm not sure it's perfectly on point. So I wonder if I could just ask that indulgence.
Yeah, I'm not, sure, of course, you can always contact counsel, but this is all, this is, I don't know if this is a question of first impression, or whether we have some other cases that are like this, kind of buried in the vault. Toni seems to indicate she can't remember any.
I'm just trying to think, and I remember that demo permit case, I'm trying to think of it.
It's a Delphi Street.
Right.
The community board wanted to talk about it.
Was it a Delphi Street or something?
Yeah, it was, but I don't think it's necessarily relevant, it just came to mind as one of the old vesting cases where a vested right was not recognized. And I think it was not recognized for reasons that are very different than what we have here.
Right, okay. But you know, when I, so I think, as you say, this is not a question that is posed for new construction. That's really obvious, right? Either you add permits or you didn't, either you worked during the allowable times or you didn't, you count that stuff. But on, on a conversion, like what are, what are, let's say, what is the harm that could exist if this were permitted in this case, based on these kinds of facts? You know, you could, you could have pulled a permit the day before, and then allowed for a look back all the way to the beginnings of all of the Alt 2s and 3s. And it's true that most gut renovations are Alt 2s and 3s up until, it could be up until, really, you know, the day before the zoning. A lot of the times with developers, they don't even actually know what they're gonna do. They know that the building needs to be fixed up.
So maybe that, we can play that out, but I wonder if conversions are so specific that it's hard to create a framework for all of them. The example you gave, which is kind of similar to this one, except for that it's the day before, if all the work that was done leading up to that was work that can be used, or the new use that you got the permit for a day before the zoning change, then I would argue that is on, you know, that's on the same, essentially the same facts here, and the result, if you take a more expansive read of permit, is probably the same as what I'm asking for here. I could, the one that I referred to earlier, where you started to build a hospital for a while, I don't know if anyone would do that with an old industrial building, well, let's say you did. You started all the mechanicals, it's all this heavy mechanical that you need, and you have to rip it all out. And you, you got a buyer who said, I want to put a hotel there, and they came to you 20 days before the zoning was about to change. And so now, that doesn't feel quite so good faith. You clearly were pursuing a hospital, you clearly had all the permits for a hospital. Sure, you were doing a gut renovation, but you'd also done a bunch of work in the, in the opposite direction of where you were going, and where you reasonably relied, even if it was an as-of-right use. We're lucky here that, or lucky is maybe the wrong word under these facts, but we are fortunate that what we've done to date is all, we don't have to go backward, we can keep going forward. Those permits were in place, and, and the work that was done is now all prepping this building for what we want to do, which is no longer as-of-right.
Yeah, that, that's, I think, an interesting point in that case, right? That if you're, if a year ago, you had started building out an office, and then you pull a permit to, or you, you file your PAA to convert it to a hotel, and the work we're watching being done is demolition of all the office work. Maybe that's a different kind of thing, because no work is being done on, towards the hotel, and the movement towards offices clearly an expensive process, right? Because, yeah, okay. Okay, you had your job. Are there any speakers on this, please? Okay.
My, my question with that is, is that while you're doing that work, it's not that you're relying at that time on this being a hotel. And I think that in the common law, it, if, if you have case law that supports your position that that type of reliance, is it necessary during the time that that board is created? Then I'd ask that to be in a memo.
Okay. That, we can do that. And I think, just the initial response to that, is that some of the reliance is based on what the law allows.
Sure.
Hotel is as-of-right.
Yes.
So it's not unreasonable reliance. It would be better if we modified, and if we had the drawings, you know, in the back room for the hotel while we were doing all this work, but...
If there's an intention for it to be a hotel at the time that that work's being done, that might be relevant.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we hope so, because we have that documented intention, that direction, I think it was November 2017, pursuant to the hotel.
And that might be, and that, that, I think it'd be better if you can find some, some of the case law that supports that position. But it is, it is persuasive if that work is being done for that very purpose, and that reliance, and the only thing that's missing is something ministerial. That would be, that, that could be an argument that could be made, and that could be convincing.
That's what we're trying to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
So how much time?
Um, I think we need four weeks to submit, if that works for the board.
September 17th, it's 26th, October 3rd, it's 24th, submission's September 11th. All right, that's to October 3rd. That's a Thursday. So, so there, the next available hearing is October 3rd, which is a Thursday.
Okay.
Submission would be September 11th.
So submission on 9/11 and hearing on 10/3.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Zoning calendar, item number 9, 2018, 48BZ, 5205 Holland Boulevard, Staten Island.
Good morning, Todd Dale appearing for Office of Phil.
Okay. Thank you for putting in the very nice fence. So are there any speakers on this?
No, it's closed.
Oh, it's closed already? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, so then I'm afraid to go near my mic, but are there any, I'm sorry. So I'd like to make a motion to grant on condition that the site must be maintained free of debris and trash, no tires are to be stored outside of the building, paving, painting, fencing, fence slating, and so on, to be maintained in good condition and repaired or replaced as necessary.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number 10, 2018, 1 Nut 49BZ, 230 48, 146th Avenue in Queens.
Good morning, Commissioners. Last week we were here.
State your name, please.
My name is Ammanash Malhotra, architect. Last week we were here for 230-48, 146th Avenue.
Yeah, this, this is a closed hearing, you don't need to speak.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Right? We closed it last week, and you just had to make some changes on the drawings, and that, that was it.
We submitted those.
Yes, okay, thank you. All right, so I'd like to make a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Application's been granted. Item number 11, 2018, 180BZ, 1441G South Avenue, Staten Island.
Good morning, Todd Dale, for you.
Good morning, okay. So the application's been closed, so I'd like to make a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Abstain.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Application's been granted. Continued hearing items, item number 12, 4311BZ, 1926 East 23rd Street. Okay, raise your right hands. Do you have a firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board responds to the board members' questions? Let's see.
Good morning, Lara Altman from Office of Lara Altman. I have a representative from the Engineers' Office with me as well. We had somebody...
Sorry, can you speak up? It's not, it's not carrying well.
Sorry, let me lower that. Again, everyone else is taller than me. Again, still Lara Altman, from Office of Lara Altman. We did a somebody tenure executive session yesterday and heard your comments. To begin, there was a comment regarding the cover letter. I apologize, I was informed last week, you guys didn't have the cover letter in the file, there seemed to be a problem with my uploading. So what I did was I re-uploaded everything into Dropbox and resent the entire submission on Friday, in case something else had a problem after speaking with your representative. So I want to let you know that. We also have a representative of the Engineers' Office here today to discuss the rear of the building. But before we get to that attic portion, I would like to address the second floor rear. There was a discussion, if you look in the statement, I did address this, the adjacent building to the north, which is on the right side of this building, was actually approved by BSA and has a rear yard. Go ahead. See if you can hear me. It has, yeah, I heard it, but when it was too far, well, you guys didn't hear me. It had a rear yard approved for 20 feet, that was for two stories, and actually, there's an A-frame roof. I will show you a side view of this building. This was the DSA approval from the year 2000. That building has been built, there was a certificate of occupancy issued in 2011, which we have here. And I also have, I'm gonna walk up and show you images showing that this building was
Can't see it, there's a tree.
I think you might have shown us this tree before. I think everyone, everyone in 2000 has this, but if you do a side view, actually, you're great here. This is our building, this is right here, and this is that adjacent building, 1922 East 21st Street, approved by BSA, 20, 20 feet.
And what about the buildings on the other side?
The building on the other side is not quite as far back, and behind us, we have six-story buildings, but also a very small rear yard, you can see.
I can't actually, so. Maybe Chair, do you have another copy?
I don't have another copy of that one. We have to bring it over. I'll show you guys the other one that I have.
Oh, I see, yeah. So, because people...
This is our building, this is 1922 East 21st Street, it's a little back. They're showing the other one that I had showed you previously, so they can see it.
Okay, but I'm gonna pass this down, it's, there's a whole row of, for lack of better description, tenement buildings that are apartment buildings that look like they only have a 15-foot rear yard, and it backs up against that. I see.
Correct. And as I said, the BSA approved plans, the adjacent structure. I'll bring it over and also have to show you, there's no head, the rear of this building is straight up, it's a A-frame roof.
The rear is, point to the rear?
The front?
Oh, okay. That's the building that was actually built?
To the right, which is to the north.
And it was actually built, though, as opposed to...
Yes, that's, I wanted to show you the image of this, the rear of that building. You can see, not even a way to...
Nice, yeah, glad they, that was approved.
I think they didn't want to look at six-story buildings, if I had to guess. So all their windows are on the side.
Oh, well. All right. Okay.
Without further ado, I will hand it over to you for attic discussion. State Jenny for the record.
My name is Hamdenaz Zandani. I'm a representative from Balbaki and Associates Engineering.
Could you lift the mic up? Yeah, yeah, sorry, it's really...
Is this okay?
Do that again, yeah.
All right. My name is Hamdenaz Zandani, and I'm a representative from Balbaki and Associates Engineering PC. And I also heard from the executive session yesterday that there was a question in regards to the collar beam in the rear of the house, and why we have a collar beam in the rear and not in the front.
Well, it's not exactly why you have one in the rear and one in the front, it's that you're using the, the low beam as a way to get around floor area, because we see so many of these houses with pitch roof, and they, they never have such low beams that go across that reduce the structural headroom. And so if, if this is, if it's a method to reduce structural headroom, then what it does is it increases the massing of the building needlessly. So therefore, the building, the height of the roof at that area should just drop to the actual five feet, or, or slope, that kind of thing. So in other words, it's supposed to be actual structural headroom as opposed to additional structure for no apparent reason. And, and as was pointed out by Commissioner Asheta, who's an engineer, you don't have have that same beam in the front of the building. Um, but even if you did, um, it's atypical for us. We see, I don't know if it's hundreds, but it feels like hundreds of these houses and, um, they never have that, so.
We, meaning that we wouldn't, we would have questioned it even if it's in the rear and on the front?
Yes, exactly.
And, and actually, let me add to my question yesterday. It's not just why you need it here and you don't need it there. The, the, even the, when you put the beam in, the forces, the lateral forces that seem to be the only reason for, like, introducing this beam is kind of less than the other spot. So where the forces are high, you didn't use the beam. Where the forces are low, you introduce that beam. So for me, it's kind of like, doesn't make sense.
Okay, uh, can I explain?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So the reason for the collar beam being that low is to comply with zoning resolution.
We know.
As you, you already know. Now, in the front, the vertical partitions are restraining the rafters from deflecting. We're using the collar beam in the back for the same reason. So, in fact, it is a structural beam, but we put it at that height just to, uh, comply with zoning and to be used as storage area. That way, the roof, instead of going dropping down towards the back, it stays the same level. From the outside, it looks better.
So-
And as per, yeah.
So that's the reason we say, if you don't have structural headroom and the whole, that's why the roof should be sloping, you change the design of your roof so that it slopes more and it's less of a massive structure in that section of the house. Right? So, so I understand that the board approved this sheer wall, incredibly unattractive sheer wall on the house next door, that doesn't mean that becomes your role model. So what you really should be doing is modifying the hip of the building at the rear so that you comply with zoning without having the mass that's an unoccupiable, unusable mass.
We, we did do revisions to the roof since the last meeting where we hipped it, we hipped the roof in the back compared to what we initially submitted.
So are you saying that you're using this beam as a tie beam to reduce the deflection of that?
The rafters.
Okay, how about if you just add a stiffening element all the way at the crown of that frame?
I'm sorry?
If you add a stiffening element all the way at the top of the frame?
And we remove that beam?
Yeah.
We're not gonna comply with zoning resolution?
No, so that's-
With that floor area? We wanna comply-
It's a hidden from, from the back.
Yeah, no, I understand, but the whole idea is that I'm less interested in the, how you structure your building because that's, you know, being, we're looking at the neighborhood character finding, that's what we look at, right? We're looking at the outside of the building. And so, the building is needlessly massive in the area where, as you say, you're complying with the zoning resolution by dropping structural headroom. So because that's not an occupiable space, you can further reduce the height of the building there. Sometimes people turn it into rooftop terraces. Sometimes people just increase it and put a, you know, increase the slope. There's a lot of different ways of approaching it from an architectural perspective, but that's what needs to be done because you can't have that be occupiable space and you're creating this unoccupiable space sort of artificially and it's increasing the massing of that, the building. Understood?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but, uh, our intention is not to provide occupational space, it's to provide-
I'm talking about the massing of the building.
The massing of the building, okay.
So, so, because that's what we're looking at and trying not to emulate the building that's too massive that happens to be right next door. That, where, where you can easily drop that roofline down. However you want, create a balcony, create a, yeah, a drop-in hip, you know, instead of continuous drop your hip down, which is another version we see. We see so many versions of this, there's lots of options. Okay?
Understood.
Okay. Um, are there any speakers on this? Okay. So, that shouldn't take you very long, right? How much time do you need to do that? That shouldn't take very long to do, right?
No.
Okay.
And we've already spoken with the client and gotten authorization to do that.
Already spoke about what?
We've already spoken with the client and received authorization to lower the rear of the roof if necessary.
Okay, um, and I just wanna see deduction area. So that'll clear up the subject of the deduction area that we talked about, right? Okay. Um, okay, so, how much time do you need? Are you ready, seven weeks? One week? Two weeks?
Yeah.
Two weeks, he needs two weeks.
Do we have any time in the end of August? That's too early.
Okay, so that's a July 24th.
That's tomorrow.
Tomorrow, what if it was next week?
Could you do it by next week?
For what date, what hearing date?
For the August 13th hearing.
Could we do it a week now, prior to the 13th? Right? No, so the, the submission date, the continued hearing date would be 8/13?
Yeah, have it, have it July 31st.
Is that enough time, a week, to, to do it? So one week to submit? And that's it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, did you get that, submit? August 13th, hearing, July 31st, submission.
Yes.
Item number 13, 2017-217BZ, 4855 Highland Boulevard, Staten Island. Well, this is, yeah, it's still open. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to board member questions?
Good morning, Lisa Orantia from Ackerman, LOP, for the applicant.
Mm-hmm. And I wanna thank you for getting that CRD-1, um, which was very clearly explained to DOB, so then I didn't feel like, oh, well, they didn't understand the question. They had to have understood the question, it was very clear. Um, okay, so I would like, are there any speakers on this? I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
I don't see any, um, conditions that we placed, so I'd like to make a motion to, um, grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Application's been granted.
Thank you.
Item number 14, 2017-273BZ, 975 East 24th Street, Manhattan, Brooklyn, Manhattan. Stop moving in Manhattan, huh? Commeration right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions, of course?
Hello again, still Lara Altman from Office of Lara Altman. Once again, we had somebody tenure executive session, heard your comments yesterday. We note, you, so you saw the change in the rear yard on the second floor.
Oh, wait, 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 you just, you submitted something in, yes?
No.
No, 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 okay.
You, you acknowledged, you had seen it.
The last submission, yeah, the actual submission for this hearing.
You were happy with the submission, we weren't, we weren't gonna change that.
Right, okay. Right, right.
You had a question regarding the slope, what the change was. I spoke with the architect yesterday. The slope change from previous submission to this one was a rise of one foot to a run of 1.3. It changed from 1 to 1.6. So it was 1 to 1.3, now it's 1 to 1.6. And that's 1 foot 6 inches, not 1.6, I should find out. So that was the change on the plans. With regarding to the roof height not being consistent, I went through the plans multiple times last night, could not find anywhere where it wasn't 35 feet. The architect did the same.
Oh, it's, there's actually-
Flipped through repeatedly.
On the, it's the elevation, it's the elevation.
I looked through it and did not see a change, but if there's something that needs to be changed, I'll be happy to-
I have to, I have to go. And this is, these are unfortunately the things where council is writing the resolution and they say, I don't know how tall the building is.
I'm, I'm looking at my-
27. Hold on, hold on a second, I just need to get there.
Still seeing 35 on my hard copy as well.
Okay. Sorry. So I started off by looking at the section. Okay, elevation says 35. That one? 35. It might be on the collective elevation.
On the streetscape, it says 35 streetscape. Yeah, as well, I just checked that. So I, I looked through every page of the plans, couldn't find it, but if you see something I didn't, I'll be happy to have it changed. Or perhaps it was an old set that had an error? It was correct in this set?
Well, that's always a possibility, yeah. Oh, you know what it was? I think it was a measurement technique.
On second floor plan, maybe?
35. Just the second.
You talked a lot about the second floor, maybe the second floor plan?
Second floor plan? Oh, here it is, yeah.
Where?
On the section, um, P11.
Okay.
The number 35, and it could just be my eyesight, 'cause, you know, we're looking at the drawings, we're doing it on a PDF, so I can't lay a little, a plan, a line across.
I'm gonna do that right now.
It, it looks like the 35 is not measured to the top of the building, it looks like it's measured to the first break.
Nope, it appears to be here.
Here, you know what, I can do this with the PDF, little line maker guy. This one's- Okay, I just did it with the PDF line maker guy. I think it's okay, I think it's-
Does appear to line up here.
Yeah, okay. Alright, what, what are the other things? Oops. You had a-
Oh, yeah. Question was, um, the floor area, total floor area increased, though slightly, I just wanted to know where that decreased.
Right, the second floor actually decreased, obviously because we increased the rear yards. It went from 1,607.06 to 1,565.75. What they did was the architect took that square footage and was able to utilize it in the attic, bringing it from 684.35 to 726.9, which increased the total square footage by 1.24 square feet.
Okay.
Still below, still below 4,000, I will point out, we're 3,998.47 square feet.
Okay.
Here's 1.0.
Yeah.
Alright, alright, thank you. Are there any speakers on this? Alright, um, then I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on the usual condition removal of existing walls and joists in excess of that shown on the plans will void the special permit.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number 15, 2017-298BZ, 14 White Street. Can you raise your right hands? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board, before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions? I do, you see.
Good morning, Ally Carrery.
Good morning, okay, so I think we are finished with this, so I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on the fire department's condition, which is shown on the drawings as well, but I wanna make sure it's in the resolution, which just requires that automated parking systems be filed and approved by fire department and DOB prior to start of construction.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Application's been granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 18, 2018-8BZ, 1820 Croxie Avenue, Brooklyn.
It's number 16, Joan.
What?
16. You called out 18.
Oh, I'm sorry, number 16, I'm sorry.
I think it's-
Number 18, 2018-8BZ, 1820 Croxie Avenue, Brooklyn. I did that yesterday, it's weird.
Yeah, you did, and it doesn't say 18 on your-
It's weird, isn't it?
I don't know. Slipping, girl, slipping. Like dyslexic.
Okay, do you affirm, okay, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to board member questions? Okay, so it's signed.
Elise Fullader from Eric Palatnik PC. I have today with the architect with me, just in case, but I don't think there's anything to speak about.
There isn't, thank you for bringing the architect, sorry about that, okay?
You know, it's better to have it than not.
Okay, good, yes. Um, then I'd like to know if there are any speakers on this? No? So then a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on condition, the condition being no repairs to any vehicles that are not from the dealership, dealership, um, I guess it's prior to sale, right? In other words, they, their repairs prior to sale, right? No repairs of cars already purchased coming for service, that's the distinction, right? No, 'cause it's not a service station, it's to prepare the cars, right? No cars parked, to be parked on the sidewalk. Um, they should provide signs, which I think they did, um, which is a condition, though, indicating prohibition of parking on the sidewalk. So a motion to grant on those conditions.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 17, 218-96BZ, 145 Ludlow Street, Manhattan. Raise your right hand, so you can get that out of the way. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes.
Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel PC for the applicant, good morning. Chair, we, um, had a representative at the review session. We understand that, uh, since the installation of the mats and their utilization by the applicant, that, um, they've cut down on the noise and have, um, removed the source of, uh, complaints from any of the neighbors. They've operated without incident since the installation of the mats. I think that there basically was one discussion, which was that, there was a discussion as to whether the mats could be placed there permanently. I was hoping that Jeff could address the board to discuss some, the routines that are used at the gym and the fact that they're used for certain activities, but for other activities, it would be, it would hamper their ability to operate.
Jeffrey Catenacci.
Hi. You want to talk about the mats?
Good morning. Sure. So, the way the workouts are set up, there's different stations throughout the room. On any given day, the stations change. So, wherever there are any sorts of weights or anything that would cause any vibration, we put the mats out. So, they're permanent in the sense that we always put them out where there are weights on any given day. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, why did this? I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no. So, just so I understand, so maybe on Monday, you may have a program where you may not have weights? And on Tuesday, you may have a program where there might be weights? And when you have a program where you have the weights, you will put the mat and the weight?
Correct. Correct. So, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday are cardio-focused days. So, on those days, we have less weights out. Maybe we'll have a few light weights, and if we do, we have a mat underneath them. But with the cardio workouts, their body weight stuff, their, you know, we'll do sprints, shuttle sprints, agility stuff, jumping jacks, high knees, no weights involved, so we don't put the mats there. But if there are weights, then we do a weighted jumping jack. We'll put mats where the weights are.
And so, and the reason the mats can't be in, just laid throughout the space is because? Why?
Well, the mats aren't intended for agility-type movements. They're a bit slippery. So, they're, they're MMA mats. The gym floor that we have, the rubber. They're, they have much more traction, traction to them. So, the way we have it set up now, we put them out just where the weights are.
All right. Okay, thank you. Okay. Are there any speakers? Anybody from the building attending this? Okay. Well, I suppose that's an indicator. We didn't get any letters, and we'd had that before, so, or at least we had comments. So, then I think we're... Okay. Everybody okay with this? So then, thank you for following up with this. So, I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nesheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on condition that the volume should always be maintained by the limiter and not altered, that speakers to be located as required to avoid disturbance to neighbors, and that mats are installed, be installed as recommended by the acoustical engineer and replaced as needed. Okay?
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nesheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you, Chair. Application's been granted.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you.
Item number eighteen, twenty-eighteen one oh-four BZ, twelve thirty-four, twelve thirty-eight, East Twenty-second Street, Brooklyn.
Yes. Good morning. Mira Altman from Los. Mira Altman. You just wanted an adjournment. Correct. Would it be possible to put on September seventeenth's calendar? Twenty-six. Twenty-six. Two seventy-three, six twenty-two. There are... Is that there? Yes, it is. No. Sure. Sorry. Getting down there. Understand? Thank you. Uh, that's, oh, that's the DOT. All right. Let's just put there. Okay. September seventeenth. Uh, submission date of August twenty-eighth. Submission date, twenty-eighth. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Item number nineteen, twenty-eighteen one forty BZ, one hundred dash oh-three North Conduit Avenue, Queens. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member questions? No. I'm redoing now, because you just put your hand up. Just put your hand up in the beginning. Thank you. Put your hands both back up. Thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to the board member questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Eugene Pillman for the applicant.
No. I can't even read. Just put it.
So, we attended the board's review session yesterday, and we made a submission at night to send revised plans, which have been thoroughly vetted for compliance with the June second DOT approval. Some of the additional changes that were made is we added a note indicating that the concrete will be of a high-strength type-three concrete. And we reviewed all the signage and added some additional signs to the Westerly curb cut on Cohansi, indicating that it's for pedestrian cars only.
Sorry. Do that one again? Sorry. Go back. I, so, where does the, okay, I see the sidewalk.
The type-three sidewalk with all the wire fabric.
Right.
There was a new note added on the Westerly curb cut along North Conduit that says passenger cars only. And on the Esterly curb cut, the forty-foot curb cut, we added a note that says delivery trucks use this entrance in order to further signify compliance with the DOT's requirement.
Right. That one is, I find, I mean, that's nice, but what if they use the other side?
Right. So, we anticipated that line of questions as well. So, we reached out to the operator, Bola Operating Corp. So, the gas station in Convenience Corp. will be operated by Bola Operating Corp. And they're a vertically integrated company, which means that they handle their own fuel deliveries. They self-supply. So, as such, they have complete control over fuel deliveries and will be able to actually clearly instruct drivers to use the station as intended.
But the DOT comment. I don't know whose that is, but anyway. The DOT comment was, sorry, about tractor-trailers and fuel trucks. So, it's not just what Bola can control. Tractor-trailers are just anybody.
Right. So, the distributor that they use is HLA Distributors. It's one of the big national chains, and it's an all-in-one supply. So, they bring, you know, the soda, they bring the chips, they bring the deli meat. So, it's an all-in-one delivery. So, as such, they have a greater amount of control. It won't be, it won't be a bunch of different companies pulling into the site randomly, like the Pepsi truck and then the Snickers candy bars. Deliveries will be done by HLA. Yes.
So, so fuel and delivery would be by companies that are assigned to Bola. But can any other tractor-trailer enter just to fill in gas? Is that something that would happen here?
Well, I mean, we have signage. We have pavement markings. You know, we're not going to put a gate on the curb cut, and, you know, we'll take every measure possible to sort of advise any vehicles the proper entry and exit procedures at the site. But we believe that the amount of signage that was added more than clearly shows that only the curb cut on the right side could be utilized.
Did you have a conver, I mean, I don't know how these comments came about. Did you have a conversation with DOT about this? Or this was just part of our general review?
There, there was an extensive conversation with DOT that led to their approval letter.
That you had? That somebody in your group had?
And we have Andrew Valari here.
Yeah.
Will be able to elaborate on that.
Please.
To answer your question, yes, we've had.
Speak, state your name.
Haven't been here in a while. Andrew Valeri.
And lift the mic, so it's your height. Yeah.
Andrew Valeri, for the record.
Okay.
Uh, yes, we have had a number of conversations with the DOT, and a number is probably downplaying it. It's extensive coordination between the last hearing and now, even before then. But what specifically?
No, no. My, my question is, when they suggested that restriction, what were they thinking you were supposed to do in order to enforce or encourage? I mean, I understand the idea that when you're in, when you're in control of the trucks, that's one thing, but you can't possibly be in control of all the guys who are trying to get gas. All right, just a second.
To answer your question, there's a number of things that you can do. So, what we've done off the bat is install signage, so it's abundantly clear which driveways are for trucks and which are for not, not trucks. The only, the other item is just the overall driveway design. You have one driveway that's forty feet wide, and then you have another driveway on, on North Conduit that's only fifteen feet wide. A fifteen-foot-wide driveway is meant for one-way access, and it's barely.
Right.
Wide enough for any vehicle larger than a passenger vehicle to get in there. A tractor-trailer wouldn't pass up a forty-foot driveway to use the fifteen-foot.
Right. But on Cohansi, that's the one that I'm thinking about. Like, what would, so that one is only for a delivery, Bola delivery, right? Or not for, it's not supposed to be used at all by the, the trucks for entrance? But it's a two-way route for the cars? So, my question is, why wouldn't a tractor-trailer who's coming down Cohansi, because that's the convenient way to go, unless it's not permitted? I mean, maybe there's some other regulations that aren't permitting large trucks to go that way?
So, Cohansi Street, it is a largely residential street today. It is going through this improvement process right now under a DDC project to make it a much more modern roadway with a wider roadbed and sidewalk on both sides of the street and curb and everything like that. So, you have to keep in mind what Cohansi Street does. So, north of North Conduit really just serves a residential neighborhood. I think it, there's, I might be mistaken here, but there's one road that's currently in this network to the northwest of the site that would, in the future, be dead-ended. So, truck traffic on Cohansi Street north of North Conduit, I don't really think is likely. I don't know why there would be a truck there. There might be signs that restricted today. Now, since the roadway is going to be two-way in the future, meaning you can go north and south on Cohansi, you could be on somewhere south of North Conduit and make a left and go north to access the site. Again, I think that this property is very, very well-suited for the westbound flow of vehicles. There's gas stations all over the place. I think that if you're on the Belt Parkway and you need gas, or you're on the Service Road and you need gas, you're going to continue westbound past the site. I really don't think that there's going to be all that many tractor-trailers fueling here. There is a diesel offering, but just the way the site is configured, it's not, it's not beneficial or really all that possible for a tractor-trailer to get into the diesel pump. What that is really designed for is a smaller, maybe a landscape vehicle, a utility-type of truck, not necessarily a tractor-trailer getting into that position. So, I don't, I don't think that it's really likely to happen.
In your conversation with DOT, they were only concerned about the really big trucks? Is that it? Not about the panel trucks and that kind of thing?
Exactly.
Those, these can go in the same as the car entrance? Is that?
Exactly.
So, they were concerned about the tight turn in and wrapping around the building, right?
Exactly.
Okay. But, but they, so, I'm just trying to underst, because I find it kind of a strange recommendation in the sense that it's hard to enforce, right? So, you can put a sign on the site that says, "Don't come here," but you, how do you restrict? I mean, I suppose you could put a sign that says, "No entry for vehicles over X foot long" on that location.
But then.
On Cohansi.
I think I, I agree with you in that point, because as soon as you get a sign that has too many words on it, it loses its efficacy, right?
Right.
So, you know, once you're reading, you know, six, seven words on a sign, you're not really reading it all together. The thing about the way this property has been designed, though, is that the widest driveway for truck access is the first one that you see, and it's first and foremost on the property. It's going to be made of a higher-strength material. There's going to be signs there. That's going to be the main focal point when you're coming westbound. I really think that the fifteen-foot-wide driveway is only for the portion of vehicles that miss the first driveway. And if you're driving a larger vehicle and you've got a trailer behind you, you're cognizant of that all the time, and you're not going to try to squeeze your way into that driveway, especially when you have utility poles on either side of it. Really, what you'd do in that case is you'd plan out your trip after that. You'd see, all right, I missed this gas station. There's going to be another one in front of me, because, you know, it's a service road for Belt Parkway. There's plenty of gas stations there.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Are there any speakers on this? So then, you want to go on about the rest of your changes on the drawings? You've got, I stopped you at thirty-foot.
Sorry. There was a series of delivery truck exit signs, I believe four of them, that would guide the truck through. And as Mr. Valari pointed out, the natural layout of the site, with the building shifted towards Cohansi Street, and with the canopies being located near the intersection, it kind of naturally suggests or leads drivers, just by its layout, to use the easternmost curb cut on, on North Conduit Avenue. And as one of the changes, you know, we've attached the actual DOT letter as sheet Z-009 of the plans, and, you know, that could ride with the approval. So, it's, it's part of the approved set, and Department of Buildings could be, could be aware of the conditions.
Okay. And the pavement markings? I don't even know what those really are. What are the pavement?
Proposed pavement markings, there are, there are arrows indicating directions, inner-out, or, or two-way or one-way. So, so the only curb cut that's one-way is the Westerly one on North Conduit.
The fifteen-foot one.
The fifteen-foot.
Okay. And the minimum distance for the required sign locations?
It says a seven-foot minimum from this place. That's indicated there as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Next to the curb cuts.
That's the only one where you have some kind of... No, wait a minute. Seven-foot minimum on, I see it on one splay. I don't see it on the other ones. But it, it only had to do with appurtenances.
Right. I think one of them has an existing, an existing utility light pole, which is.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Which is outside the seven feet.
And the others don't. Okay. And then the last one was no standing any time?
It's, um, there's a proposed, they're on, they're along Cohansi Street. The two signs are indicated that propose no standing any time, sign it right away. And they're both located along the Cohansi Street.
Good, good, good. Okay. All right. So, this was not submitted, though, right?
This was. This was submitted last night.
Oh. Submitted last night?
Yeah, it was submitted. Counsel submitted last night.
Yeah? Okay. All right. So then, there are no, did I say there are no speakers on this? Okay. So, then I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nesheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Oh, you want to grant with the DOT? Yeah. Subject to DOT conditions.
Okay. May I go on?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner, uh, let's, I'm sorry. Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nesheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 20, 2018-143BZ, 20 West 14th Street, Manhattan. Your request...
You're not this one, and it's in a German, right?
Yeah.
Todd Dale for the applicant. You received a letter from us September 17th. If that works for the board, will work for us. And we believe that what we've already done will take care of that last remaining issue in the last remaining apartment.
Oh, okay.
If a different date is required, we can do that as well. That was just suggested by COF Council.
Okay, so adjourn to October 3rd.
Sure.
I know it's a Thursday. Submission due September 11th.
September 11th, you said?
Yes.
That and upon?
Yes.
That should be... We're just... There's one apartment. We've already turned it down. And we haven't heard any issues for the last week, so we're hoping...
October 3rd.
And that's a Thursday, right? It's a Thursday?
Yes.
Item number 21, 2018-156BZ, 80-97 Cypress Avenue, Queens.
Should we take a break before this, or...
I don't think this is going to be...
No, the next one's going to be adjourned, so it's...
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be long.
Raise your right hands, please. I can't see everybody. Okay, do you affirm that tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond to the board member questions?
Please sign and... Did you have a chance to see the...
I did, but...
Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel, PC, for the applicant. Good morning. We had a representative at the executive session and are prepared to talk about the various issues that were raised by the board, with particularity, some of the architectural concerns, as well as operational. I know that we've submitted copies for the review of the board of the restrictive declaration that would be filed with regards to the application. Overall, we appreciate the board's sensitive consideration of this matter. We do know that, particularly with regards to an affordable housing development and a programmatic needs case, this is an area where there is not a lot of precedent. And so we understand that this has been a serious process with the board in their deliberations, and we do appreciate that. I think maybe I would probably introduce the project applicant to discuss some of the particularities, because we have brought down the height of the building, changed the configuration, increased some of the buffer. And so I know that there were some questions around that, and we'd be happy to answer them.
Right. Do you have... I know you submitted yesterday some modifications. My computer is not behaving properly. Can you... Do you have a copy of the... A hard copy of them?
We do. We can hand that up now.
Thank you. You have the new ones?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Alan Logan from Urban Architectural Initiatives, architect of record for this project. So just in response to yesterday's executive sessions, we picked up pretty much all the comments that were put on there. We labeled defenses. We said to be a metal picket fence. We clarified the light and weight on there. We provided a section for the cantilever on P13.
Okay, let's go a little bit slower so we can follow along with the bouncing ball. Okay, so metal picket fence, you wrote.
You separated the fence from the lot line designation. That's good.
The picket fence goes, just because I know this was a discussion, it goes all the way around the side lot line and the back of 59th Street to the building.
To the building. It does not go in front of the building.
That's it, in front of the building. And then there is no fence along Cypress or that other little corner of 59?
Correct.
Okay. Next.
If you go to page P13, you can see that we provided a section of the building, also to address the issue of why we had to raise the first and second floor height by one foot. You can see these are actual structures that our structural engineer has provided us. We're using a W33 to facilitate the cantilever. So given all those heights, we have to meet the minimum parking requirement of eight foot two for band parking.
Is considered a cantilever when you've got a column so close?
We are cantilevering four foot six inches. Yeah, no, it's expensive, we've been trying to say. I mean, those are massive beams that we're using on the project. And that's one of the reasons we could not really accommodate the front yard on the unimproved portion of 59th Street, because we would have had to extend the cantilever.
Funny, okay. That's more of my engineering 101 question for later. We don't have to do that now. Okay, go ahead.
On P14, we provided a landscape plan. We're using tall hedges, tall evergreen trees, staggered and densely packed, tall and wide, planted at 10 feet when they're young and growing up to 40 feet at maturity, so they're...
That's the height of the building that's...
Substantially.
That's the Frank Lloyd Wright approach to buildings.
That's right, that's right. So we substantially met that requirement to make sure that the, you know, height of the building is screened from the neighbors. Building height reduced, I believe I explained that. We brought, per the commission's request, we brought the building down to grade. But we had to add another foot to the height of the building, just given the height requirement. So we were... We came down overall two feet on the height of the building. We also provided elevations in NAPD 88, as well as reference to the first floor.
But that's what it was before, right?
No, before.
It wasn't a datum.
No, it was the Queens datum before. So we converted it.
But you're still showing the base plane at 124.
It was lower before. The base plane of the previous submission, based on the Queens datum, was 1.625 lower.
Oh, that makes sense.
Yeah, so we just converted the datum. So this way, when we go to the building department, it'll be easier to be understood by everyone.
Yeah, but don't forget, you know, you're the architect, right?
Yes.
NADD 88 is the rule now.
Absolutely.
Don't do Queens datum, you'll get in trouble.
That was the survey we got, and we have to update it before.
Even the surveyors don't know. It's the weirdest thing.
They're catching on. They're catching on. Once we send it back to them over and over again, they get it. And then, I think there was a question about the side yard setback. It's actually a side setback in the building. Per VR23632B, for the lower density developments, the zoning requires a certain amount of setback.
Right.
On the side yard. So if you turn page P002, drawing number three, you can see how much... Nonperformance is minimum. We also actually...
But before you said... So tell me how you're interpreting what that section in the zoning says.
After 33 feet... And I'm sorry, I didn't review the section fully, but after 33 feet...
Can you give me the section number? Sorry.
Sure. It is 23632B.
Go ahead.
And after 30 feet, you have to have a setback. And for every feet, you have to have a further setback.
Okay, but so, all right, this is mostly out of curiosity because I've heard the interpretation's equal to the number of people that I've asked. So when... After 30 feet, 30 feet is your base height?
Yep.
Right? And after 30 feet, then for every, say, foot higher, what do you give?
You set it back further. It's kind of like this...
Set it back how much?
Set it back, I think, by one foot, I think it is. I don't have the code in front of me, so I don't want to make something up for you. But it's a sky... It's similar to the sky exposure plane, right? Once you head somewhere, you just got to kind of draw that line.
Okay, so because you are... How much higher? Your fort... What's your final height?
Forty. Building height at that edge is 40.
Forty, oh, because this section is the one that's not...
On the side, yeah.
This is... Yeah, okay. So this is where the building is 17 feet away from the property line.
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct.
That's a little confusing, though. Isn't that flying? That portion of the building sits on Pilote.
Yes.
Right? So the section that you're showing, that's what's confusing about the section.
So we start with the required side yard, right? So your line, your setback line, is not from where you have the wall of the building, it's for where your required side lot is. So the required side lot is 14 foot eight, right? And then that's where we started taking our calculations from.
No, but the reason that I'm a little confused about, where is this section three taken?
Section three is taken, if you go to the floor plans, P002. If you go P006, I'm sorry. Actually, better yet, if you go to...
It's a weird diagonal.
It's perpendicular to the side lot.
Side lot line.
So actually, if you go to P008, we also hatched in the part that's noncompliant.
What is the section with the cantilevers taken?
It's on P14.
So, but it... Sorry, so, I mean, it doesn't really matter. This is mostly an academic discussion because, you know, obviously, you're a little bit calculating, that you're a little bit imposing on it. But if you took this section actually, you would find your first floor flying, right? Your first floor in that location is on Pilote.
On Pilote, yes, that's correct.
Right? So you're showing it as a first floor when it really isn't, right?
That's correct. It's diagrammatically...
Yeah, it's a diagram about what goes on in the setback. But it's not a diagram of your actual... It's not an actual section.
Right, if you look at P013, that's really an actual section on the Pilote area.
P013?
Yep.
Yeah, right. What you just provided, right, okay. Okay, keep going.
That was all the comments that we had from you guys architecturally. So if there's any other questions...
Okay, oh, and so then the only other thing I just want to point out is the landscaping plan is showing street trees on the sidewalk. And so, and the restrictive dec... I don't remember exactly what the language is, but the whole idea is that ideally, it wouldn't actually be sitting in a sidewalk. It'd be sitting in dirt with grass.
Correct.
Right? That's for you to persuade DOT to let you do.
Absolutely. We have to provide the street trees per the frontage anyway, so if we could provide it near the building and that off-site, it's even better for us.
Right, right. But part of it is because I know there was discussion... Maybe, Richard, you want to come back? There was discussion about speaking to DOT to try to get a waiver from the paving requirement. So, and with this interest in street trees, to get a waiver but to allow there not to be a sidewalk, instead just to be grass, right? Which is something that we want you to pursue.
Understood, totally understood. It's in the applicant's interest, and we intend to do that, not only for purposes of the board's request, but also because we feel it makes a better development for the applicant.
Yeah, definitely, right. And I think the community would appreciate that, that there's not a sidewalk that takes you to 59th Street. Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you, thank you. Is there anything else you wanted to add? No? Yeah, right, sorry, the restrictive deck. Yeah, so the restrictive deck, yeah.
So they indicate that the units are affordable for the life of the building.
That's good.
But the question, the main question I had is, in the event that they elect to abandon, should the underlying zoning district is changed or the premises become a regulatory agreement? Does the declaration... Does declaration cancel? Should that paragraph stay?
In the event that the declarant elects to abandon this application?
Yes, this application.
Underlying zoning district is changed, that's... Sorry. So the... Okay, so subject... No, so the subject to... Ah, okay. Now I understand your question. Yeah, okay. So... Sorry. In terms of the regulatory agreement? I need Richard back at the stage. In terms of the regulatory agreement, as we all know, HPD regulatory agreements are for a term of years, right? So you could have a 25- or 30-year term or something like that, and then decide not to continue that because this is a variance based on provision of low-income housing below 60% AMI, right? The... That term of providing that housing has to exist for the life of the building. So entering into a regulatory agreement with HPD can't terminate the agreement, right? Because then it undoes that life of building.
I understand.
So as long as you agree to remove that section, right?
Okay.
We agree, okay.
Yeah, we do.
Then we could, because our... The way we work is, these restrictive declarations have to be executed before we issue our resolution. So they don't have to be executed before the hearing is closed, right?
Understand.
Okay, so...
We talked about that internally prior to the hearing, so we understand.
Okay, and then, I think that was it, right? Okay. Great, so in that case, are there any speakers on this?
Yes, there's a neighbor still.
Yes, okay, yes.
Yeah, I'm just... Sorry.
Hi, I was trying to follow along with some of the...
I'm sorry, please, please, turn your...
Judy Cancel Valerio. I was trying to follow along with some of the changes, because I know there have been changes. And I don't understand, in terms of feet, how tall the building's going to be now.
We'll go through them with you, okay.
I've always taken issue with the size of it, the area.
Okay. Okay, so I just want to go through... Are there any other members of the public here to speak? No. So I know you're probably here as like an emissary for the neighborhood, right? So we have been listening to you. We're aware that there were 35 letters of opposition, and we discussed what the concerns are.
Do you have an extra copy of the plans?
Yeah.
You could share it with the neighborhood.
Right, that's... The... So the original application was for a six-story building, right? And so we brought the building down to, ultimately, it's a five-story building, but the building is set back very far from the side property line, right? And it's set back 33 feet from the side property line. And it rises to four... Well, actually, on that side, it rises to five stories in... On one portion, and four stories on Cypress, and then sets back one store... Sets back and then rises to another story. And its overall height is 47 foot eight inches. And when we talk about those measurements, it's what the zoning resolution directs us to measure from, which is known as the base plane. And the base plane is kind of this... They take the average heights, so average levels of the grade, and they figure out what those are. And then that becomes the height from which they measure. So at some point, standing on the sidewalk, it might feel a little bit taller. And in other parts, standing on the sidewalk, a little bit shorter because the base plane is an average of what the grade is on the site. So from the average grade on the site, it's 47 foot nine inches to the top of the... To the roof.
So it sounds like the back of it, on 59th Street, is going to be the five-story end.
Yes.
We were just fronting a cemetery.
Which fronts on a cemetery.
And there's also no fencing on that end. I live on 59th Street. I'm the one who takes issue with the side.
Oh, no, no, okay, no, so there's two parts to it, right? The side-facing, the closed portion of 59th Street, rises four... Rises five stories. And then a portion that is facing the side properties is set back 33 feet from the property line. So it's very far. It's almost the width of a street, right? Like sidewalk to sidewalk, it's almost the width of the street. I forget how wide your 59th Street is.
It's not very wide.
Right.
It's a dead-end street. And at the top, where this property is, it kind of slopes up like a hill. So of course, it's going to look even more massive.
So to put this into perspective, the building is seven feet taller than what would be allowed without them coming here. That's the first part, in terms of that, right? And it effectively, that extra floor is their waiver because they're getting a waiver of additional floor area, which allows them to build that extra floor. So effectively, they're getting that extra floor plus a little bit is the waiver in the interest of building low-income housing, which is a public policy initiative of this mayor, for example, right? But in the interests, because we listened to you, we had them drop the height by a floor. And we also had them fill up by a lot, 20 feet, all along the side property line with heavy landscaping, so that the trees are going to be very tall trees. And the concept is that actually, the trees will make this look park-like next to you. And you won't, from your house, be able to see the building because there'll be trees all around it. Yeah, it wraps, yeah, exactly. It wraps all the way around 59th Street, all the vegetation, even onto the section that's not their property, that is that on the closed road, that's a cemetery.
I want to go back to the fencing that was mentioned.
Yes.
Is there any entrance or exit on 59th Street?
No, so that was the other thing we had them eliminate. At one point, they had a drive-through that took people through their site all the way to 59th Street, to your 59th Street. They took that out. And now there's a fence that goes all the way around that edge of 59th Street and along the side property line, a residential-style picket fence. And no through-walking or anything. So no one can enter through... There's dense vegetation in the way. You'd have to like climb through trees and over a fence in order to get there. So, and we were very concerned about that as well. The 59th Street, that's that unimproved street. The 59th Street, that's that unimproved street, we were very concerned that the Department of Transportation would make them open it, which would be really bad for traffic, so they represent that they are going to, and we can't control Department of Transportation, but they represent that they're going to go to the Department of Transportation and ask for the requirement to pave that section of 59th Street to be waived, and instead to plant a section of it that would be normally like the sidewalk with. Okay? Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else on this? All right. Okay. So then, with the understanding about the restrictive deck modification, right? And others, the shuttle bus is in the restrictive deck?
It is, but there are no hours indicated, it's just the commitment to provide it, peak and off-peak.
Okay. So I, can we talk about that just a little bit?
Sure.
The operational plan, more for the shuttle bus?
Yeah, I, I mean, the understanding, I think, is that we would, we would run it regularly, we just wanted an opportunity to, from a scheduling perspective, to modify it in accordance with what the peak demand would be. So, we, we were hoping to have a commitment for the shuttle bus and for regular operation, but have the ability to, basically, to the extent that it would be more intense during some times and less intense during some times, to adjust the schedule accordingly.
Well, since peak demand is sort of a term of art, why don't we just add that language, that the shuttle bus will be provided to meet during peak demand times? That's a term of engineering art, right?
That's great.
You got that, during peak demand times.
Is it that you own? Did you come to the...
Yeah, 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 sorry.
State your name.
Amanda Iannati. We can use that language, as it states now, it just says, it'll be provided with peak and off-peak hour scheduling, but if you want it to say at peak demand times, we can say...
No, no, I think the, I think the peak and off-peak is better.
Yeah, yeah, it's better. Yeah, yeah, I didn't realize.
Okay.
At peak and off-peak hours, okay.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Good. Oh, in other words, to translate that, without having to read too much in, because these are lawyers who will read whatever they want to read in, right? During peak hours, that implies more, more frequency.
Right.
Right, okay, so maybe it even indicates that kind of language, that it says frequency scheduled to meet, no?
At fre...
Yeah, okay, never mind, I can't write it in there. Okay, okay. All right, then, so then I would like to make a motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on condition, the condition being, as stated, that there'll be a restrictive declaration that is records, executed and recorded prior to the release of our resolution, that it will commit to operation of shuttle bus service, according to it, the terms of peak demand and off-peak demand, in my computer, no, okay? Oh, no. Sorry, I just lost my, sorry. And I'll have to make this part. That landscaping will be provided and maintained pursuant to the landscaping plan as shown, and maintained in top condition, and vegetation replaced as needed, which should be based on a very good contract with a landscape architect, right, or a landscaper. And that window wall attenuation will be provided according to DEP requirements, and that the restrictive declaration will provide for the provision of low-income housing at 60% below AMI for the life of the project. And street trees will be planted at close intervals on 59th Street. And I just want to add that this is the second of these, of a variance application under this kind of newly created concept of the, of the extension to low-income housing of the Cornell Doctrine for deference, right? It's a, it's a second one, it's an experimental process, and that the, the minimum criteria are that the project be, the applicant be, let me take that out, sorry, the applicant be a low-income affordable housing developer with experience in developing low-income affordable housing, that it be for 60% and under AMI, and that, and that in terms of the findings that we're making, and I need to, I need to clarify this, right? That under the Cornell deference doctrine, that is a doctrine that's been developed over decades and decades by the courts, for houses of worship and schools. And every time there's been a challenge of those cases, the courts have refined what it means a board such as ours has to look at, right? This being a new concept, it's never been challenged, so we don't know what the courts will consider, even if they will uphold this, this kind of new idea, right? So, in terms of looking at what's the minimum variance necessary, we're having some difficulties with that. And so, at the moment, we're relying very much on how we make a fair balance between the need to develop affordable, low-income housing. I say that because I, it is only directed at 60% and under AMI, right? That we're trying to figure out ways to make a fair balance between the need for low-income housing, which in a memo both that counsel, you wrote here, counsel for the applicant wrote, and in counsel for the applicant on the first case, about the extreme shortage of units of that range in New York City, the shortage amount is an astonishing number. It's something like 70% of New York City is at 60% below AMI. The, and that's the reason for this, but at the same time, a balance between the extreme need and its impact on the community, and that's, that's the struggle. And so we're still figuring out how to establish, establish that balance, and I want to make that very clear, because especially with Mr. Lobel, I'm expecting him back in a minute now. Okay, so having said all that, I'd like to make a motion to grant and to wish you the best of luck on this project.
Thank you, Chair.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
This application's been granted.
Thank you, and well, I really appreciate the board's very careful deliberation here. We understand that this is considered to be a fairly new area of law, and we listened to all of your comments, we were really happy with the resolution, and we look forward to, to continuing to develop this, this line. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Item number 22...
No, 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 we're going to take a break.
No, this is a...
Oh, 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 sorry, sorry. I know, but we're 20 minutes past the rule.
Item number 22, 2018, 171 BZ, 1 East 78th Street, Manhattan.
Aye, Jeff Mulligan.
You waited all this time for that? Okay.
Actually, I just walked in, so it was perfect.
Okay, so...
There was a request for September 10th, I think, but that, I don't know.
I think, I thought the opposing...
There's an issue with the date, the 10th.
Issues with that date.
Yeah, opposing counsel had issues with the date, but I don't know that that...
It's also bad for our calendar.
It's bad for our calendar, more importantly, so...
Sorry, September 10th is bad for your...
Yeah, we have 29 cases, and six of them, six variances. You're representing...
And I'm also frankly not sure whether we'll be able to get all the responses from the various agencies.
Right.
So, agencies like DEP, Health Department, Landmarks...
So, Health Department told me in an email that they just wanted to look at the project, but they didn't have any comments.
Okay, okay.
So that's closed, and then we got a promise date of August 23rd from DOT, but we just received a letter from LPC, they deferring one of our, the questions to SHPO.
To SHPO, which is what I expected they would do. So, so in terms of the environmental reviews, as you know, they're going on, and, and, and I just don't think we'll have all the responses, especially if, for instance, DOT sends a letter requesting additional information, then there's no turnaround time.
Right.
I know there was a request from opposing counsel for all this information from us, our, all of our record is open to public review, we cannot send it to you directly, we have a tiny staff, we can't do that kind of thing, but you're welcome to come to the office and request a view of the materials that have been received.
Okay, we would ask some form of...
You have to, you have to speak...
Yeah, and please state your name, sir.
Tim Dunphy with Hiller PC. We would just like some sort of notification, because you have to understand from our side, we feel that there's been an incredible amount of ex parte communication.
No, no, sorry, let me just explain what...
Just...
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I want to interrupt you right there, it's not ex parte communication, they're the applicant.
Right.
And so applicant, this is not an appeals case, understood?
Mm-hmm.
This is an applicant applying for a variance, right?
Right.
And an applicant and the board speak on a regular basis, we speak with the applicant's counsel, sometimes we speak directly to architects, engineers, all those different things to make it clear. They are directed sometimes to speak directly with the agencies, because, the environmental agencies, because sometimes the translation, it gets lost in translation. No ex parte, that's called an application process before the BSA, and so, no, opposition counsel does not have the right to be involved in the conversations between applicant and the board or the other city agencies. So, you're welcome to see the, let me just finish my sentence.
Absolutely.
You're welcome to look at the submissions that are made by, both by the applicant, by the other agencies and so on, that are put into the record. They're put into the record constantly, so we can't notify you that today we received this and today we received that, because again, we're a tiny staff and we, that's not our, we, we can't get involved in doing that. You're welcome to, once a week, for example, make an appointment and come down and pull the file and see what's new.
Okay.
Okay.
Just, just, I'd like to make a statement, that as a town, I did, I did the...
No, no, so this is actually an adjournment request, right? So...
And, and part of my problem with the adjournment is that we were made, we were notified of this like last week, after this applicant had pushed and pushed and pushed and said, we can do this in one week, we can do this in two weeks.
Okay, sir. Okay, sir, it's an adjournment request by an applicant, which, sir, let me, just please let me finish, and let's manage the hearing.
I just want to ask one question.
Okay.
Can I ask just one question?
Just make it quick.
Yes. Is it possible, out of courtesy, because as a town planner for the town of Yorktown for five years, whenever something like this was contentious, the attorneys spoke to each other. If there was a request for an adjournment, what would happen is the other attorney would call up, the opposing councils would call each other and stipulate a date and talk about it. That's the way it works outside of Manhattan.
No, no, that's on, that's on an appeals case? We absolutely do that on an appeals case? I don't want to debate anymore, I'm just telling you how this is done here. Okay, sir, please?
I just want to clarify, rather than you go on, one week, each week, we have to come down and, and look at the record.
You don't have to come down at all, but if you want to see the progress of the record, yeah, I would recommend, once a week, you make an appoint, you have to make an appointment to come down and view the materials.
And I can't ask for any questions, like what is the list of...
No, no, we don't do that, provide that kind of service.
Okay.
We, we're, we're a miniscule staff.
And you can't direct opposing counsel to do that.
I'm sorry?
You can't direct opposing counsel to keep us somehow informed of any submissions that they make.
It would be, I always say to applicants for projects, if you want to make your project run smoothly, I recommend communication with opposition, I always call it milk and cookies time, I say that on a regular basis, you should reach out and, and show them what you're planning to do, what your drawings look like. I can't, we can't force them to do that, we recommend that they do that, okay?
That's, that's all I'm asking, because any submissions that are made to you, we should have copies of.
Okay, but as again, I can recommend it, but we cannot require it, right?
Please.
And so, okay.
If I could just, and so we received Mr. Hiller's letter stating that the 10th doesn't work for him.
Mm-hmm.
I have communicated to staff that we're, that September 17th would work for us.
Okay.
Our concern about going later than that, just in consultation with staff, it appears that DOT and DEP have received additional information as of last week.
Mm-hmm.
Unless there's something unforeseen, I wouldn't be surprised if their review goes past early September. We request September 17th, if we need to adjourn further, then we'll do that, but I feel confident that the 17th.
Okay, but there's another, there's a SHPO question.
Yes.
It's going to be August in a minute, I can't speak for the responsiveness of a SHPO officer in the month of August, right?
Right.
So, that's the other reality. I do have to say, for the commissioner's benefit, this is the only thing that's left, is this, all this environmental review, so it doesn't really affect our review. So I'm okay with putting it on for the 17th, I, I don't, I'm not confident that you're going to have all the responses.
We will.
Because we don't know, I mean, you know, if you and your environmental counsel should be working directly with the environmental review agencies to answer questions more expeditiously as possible.
Exactly.
Which is how it's done, actually, so...
Yes, and we are doing that, so that's, we feel that September 17th is...
Okay.
Are there any submissions due? Or five?
Uh, no, no.
No, we've, we've made all the submissions.
Right.
We submitted once, and Mr. Hiller and Mr. Dunphy submitted once, and that was it.
Okay. Right, all the submissions have been made for the, this hearing, and in terms of environmental, it's just this constant turnaround.
Right.
So there's no need to provide any date other than hearing date?
No, I don't think so.
Right.
So just September 17th.
So, Mr. Dunphy, September 17th, is that...
That's fine, I just want to, there are no more submissions to seek to any of the other agencies.
No, the submissions that have been made are to the board, there are two dates for that, there will be some more back and forth regarding secret, however.
Right. So these are seeker reviews that we're focusing on now?
Secret.
The submissions that were related to the, the findings of the variance as opposed to seeker have been submitted, and so far, there's no other questions, we won't know what they are until the next hearing, when they're reviewed and the commissioners discuss them, right?
If there are any additional submissions to seek regarding secret to any of the interested agencies, could you just suggest to the applicant that we...
Again, we can recommend that they keep communication with you, but we can't require it, okay?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
September 17th.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this concludes the morning calendar for the Board of Standards and Appeals. We'll resume at 1 o'clock for the afternoon calendar. Good afternoon, this is the public hearing for July 23rd, 2019, zoning calendar, new cases, item number 1, 2019, 58 BZ, 133, 35, 79th Street, Queens. Raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond to the board member questions?
Good afternoon, Jay Goldstein, on behalf of Chuck E. Cheese, the applicant. We attended yesterday's review session and heard the comments, I'd like to try and address them one by one. With regard to the chair's comment of the 456 occupants, that number is just for the first floor, the 456 was presented to DOB with the plans that were approved to the CCD 1, and that match the proposed plans. Those plans show the occupancy of the first floor, and we, we sent in that CCD 1 to confirm the occupancy of the first floor, so that we can properly calculate the required waiting area for the special permit. With regard to the second question, the waiting area, which is a mezzanine, you correct the note, doesn't have ADA accessibility, we are providing a 210 square foot enclosed waiting area on the first floor, we amended the plans.
Can you, can you show where that is?
Yeah, we amended the plans yesterday to further illustrate it, so if you look at A9, these plans are dated as of yesterday and were submitted through submit, and hard copies were, were filed today. If you look at, right next to the entry, we hatched in enclosed waiting area, 210 square feet. Right when you get in, it's right under seating area 2.
So that, that's a whole new added space.
Well, it was always there, we just illustrated or highlighted it yesterday to better illustrate the enclosed, the fact that it will be enclosed and that it's, or we changed, rather, the, from open to enclosed, and it will be an enclosed waiting area to accommodate people with special needs or elderly people. Based on the size, it can accommodate 52 people, in addition to the 476 that can be accommodated at the mezzanine level.
210 square feet can accommodate 50 people?
Based on the four square feet per person.
That's the rule in the...
That's the special permit requirement.
That's tight.
It's, it's absolutely tight, it's, that's what we're guiding ourselves on, based on the special permit. the special permit.
Right.
So, this is, we, we again anticipate that this will only be used by people who are elderly or, you know, have physical disabilities and can't get up to the second floor.
All right, it meets guidelines, that's good.
Next question, with regards to the land use map, I apologize, there was an error in the shading, we submitted, I don't think you have it, but I have it coming with me.
Yeah, yeah, you did submit.
We submitted it, I didn't give you a copy in your part, as I was saying, though.
No.
But, you can see we changed the coloring.
Yeah, makes sense, it's a shopping mall.
I apologize, yeah, this area has very little residential, actually, because it's a very low, there's no sewer, no sewage in the area, and there's no residential really surrounding the property. It's mostly vacant lots. And the final question was, you asked that we show on the plans, the front main entrance, so on A4 and A401, we add notes that say, or that show where the front entrance is. So, if you look at sheet A401, there's, to the left of the picture, says main entrance.
A4...
A4 dot 1.
No, but on the site plan.
I show, on the site plan, so you specifically, I didn't put it on the site plan, I apologize, but you asked for it on the A4 and A4 point 1. On the site plan, we shade in the proposed area.
My issue is, I don't know how you come into this building from, on the site plan. In, in other words, when you look at the floor plan, you know, this is the thing that always just drives me crazy about architect drawings these days, right? They don't label the roads. I mean, I know there aren't roads in this case, but it's like, which way's up, which way's the building, where's the door? It doesn't actually even, oh, it says 70, it says main entry doors at the top.
Right.
But, it's like, where is that?
And then we have it on the, then we have it on the sections as well, on the elevation now, on the, on both elevation sheets, we have the main entrance.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, it makes no sense that you don't show on a site plan where the door to the building, how you get into the building.
Apologies, it was, it was an oversight, we noted it on basically every other sheet, I apologize, that I noted on this, on the site plan. And I believe those were all the questions?
Yes. Okay. Okay. Are there any speakers on this? No. Does anybody have any issues with anything? This was submitted last night?
Yes.
You got a chance to review it?
Yes.
It was plucked in already, I'll do it as well.
And it's signed and sealed drawings, I'm observing, and the date is 7/22/19?
That's the address.
Okay, right? So, then I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Shotley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaveta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant for a term of three years, which is all you get under this text.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Shotley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaveta?
Aye.
Application's been granted.
Thank you.
Item number 2, 2017-261BZ, 527 East New York Avenue, Brooklyn. You know, this one, this one? And then I gotta swing you in.
Thank you, Paul, for the station.
Raise your right hand.
I really did get it.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond on to state board member questions?
I answered it.
Okay. Received the affidavit of authorization for the firm.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners, Ron Mandel for the applicant. Thank you for your comments and questions at yesterday's review session. First, we will amend the as-of-right drawing to reflect the correct as-of-right rear yard requirement. The comment regarding the lock coverage was correct. The application is driven by the lock coverage limitation, which is 65% above the first floor. With respect to the rear yard, just to clarify, it's only the easternmost six-foot wide sliver that triggers the need for the rear yard.
Right. But it's a much smaller imposition, actually, by the zoning than you're showing on your as-of-right.
Correct, and we'll, we'll correct that.
Okay.
ALIA is a unique, not-for-profit organization. The application was packaged as a, as a religious use for several, several reasons. First, its corporate formation documents reference a religious, not-for-profit organization. ALIA's corporate bylaws provide in part that it was formed to provide a suitable place of worship for its members. And interestingly, since its inception, ALIA's mission has been specifically geared towards assisting young adults, many of whom are victims of abuse, and we feel out of place or isolated in a traditional house of worship, which is why many of the ancillary spaces that you see in the proposed drawings are being proposed, because those typically are the kind of uses in the organization's several years of existence that have been successful, and also have been driven by requests from its members and by the community.
Requests from its members to...
For example, GED classes, private counseling, computer rooms, things that either they're, have very, very limited space to provide, or they can't provide onsite because of the limitations in the existing building size. And also, privacy concerns.
Privacy concerns?
In terms of the counseling rooms, the offices for the rabbi, the various rabbis and life coaches, who the members, you know, seek consultation with.
Mm-hmm, okay.
The cases we cite in the statement of facts and findings, Sanford proposition that a house of worship may be more than a traditional place of prayer. As I'm sure you can imagine, one case in particular that I wanted to cite, which I thought was, you know, spoke, spoke to that issue, was the matter of community synagogue, a court of appeals case. In that case, the court provides that it is more than prayer and sacrifice, and all churches recognize that the area of their responsibility is broader than leading the congregation in prayer. I guess simply, with respect to our position that this be treated as a religious, not-for-profit, I think it's fair to say that there's some churches that have choir rooms, some synagogues, for example, may have a museum.
I apologize, can you tell me the, the case again?
Sure, it's called Matter of Community Synagogue.
Do you have a citation?
Yes.
That wasn't in your papers, was it?
It was.
It was?
And I can provide the citation as well?
It's in the statement of facts, commissioner.
It's in, yeah, okay, so, all right.
I don't...
Would you like the citation?
Sure, why not, if you've got it.
Sure, it's 1 NY2D 445, and the code I reference, that page 453.
Okay, thanks.
So, as, as I started to say, you know, churches may provide more than just the prayer space, there's a choir room, synagogues may have a museum, for example, or some kind of youth lounge for its members. ALIA provides young adults with guidance-oriented educational and character development programs, in addition to religious services and religious programming. But the, the programming, the essence of the organization and a lot of what they speak to and provide really is rooted in, in religion and the spiritual beliefs. ALIA is affiliated with Chabad, which is a Lubavitch organization, which I think also speaks to kind of where it came from, how it started. And clearly, this is, this is different than other Chabad-type facilities, but again, it's catering, it's, its mission is to cater to a different population.
So, you, you just maybe spoke in code just there. So, what do you mean, it speaks to where it came from and different...
It's embedded, it's roots, the roots of the organization are, you know, embedded in religion and spiritual beliefs, which is the reason why we package this as a religious, not-for-profit organization, which is how it's referenced in its corporate documents.
Right. But, so, but sometimes there are community centers that are created by churches, for example, but they're community centers as opposed to a church, right? How do you distinguish this from a community center?
I think this is different. The essence of this facility is the house of worship on the ground floor. That's really, that's one of the fundamental, one of the more important spaces in the building, one of the larger spaces in the building. And so, a lot of the members are coming to the facility for prayer, some more often than others. Not everyone comes to the house of worship component, because that's not what they're there for. But again, the rabbis that are there, the spiritual coaches that are there, they're approaching this in the angle of religion, of Jewish religion and Jewish thought.
So, I'm, I'm sensing you're doing a little bit of this on the fly, because you didn't come with your client, right? So, maybe this is, it's premature for you to be answering these questions, because we, I had asked if you could explain a typical day for a typical participant, and I'd rather this be handled by the person who's managing this program?
Yes.
So, you know, because you just said people come who aren't even going to go to the synagogue, so then that's skipping over the fact of it being a religious institution, right? So, let's, let's get them...
I, I would like the rabbi to speak, and forgive me, it's my fault, I didn't expect our matter to be heard so early in the day, he had an obligation earlier, so forgive me, it's my fault. He's on his way, but he won't be here in time to address that. But we will have it in writing, and he'll be present at the, at the next hearing to address it personally.
And in writing would be the best, that would just clarify your programmatic analysis, right?
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm. Okay, you want to go on?
Another comment was raised regarding the proposed location for reception security area. We'll have that referenced on our revised proposed drawings as well, in addition to the location for the refrigerated trash storage.
Sorry, what are you saying, you have it, is there going to be reception?
Yes, it will be included on the proposed drawings.
Ah, okay. So, so that's something, it's a, and just to clarify, so with a synagogue, for example, we never see a reception area?
It's more of a security, it's more of a security point.
Right, so, okay, so there's going to be some kind of a security situation?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we'll have the security area reference, as well as the location for the refrigerated trash storage, which will be included.
Mm-hmm.
A comment was made regarding access to the roof and the purpose for that. The intent was to have space to build a Sukkot for the holiday of Sukkot, the hot holiday. That was, that was the intent. If the organization committed not to permit amplification of sound or any permanent lighting, and it was only used in observance of that holiday to construct the Sukkot, the Sukkot for Sukkot, would that be a way to avoid an additional noise study?
No, because, for one, that's a pretty noisy ho, it's a festive holiday, right?
It is.
People go up there and they party, noisy. And, and the idea of actually restricting it to a particular day is really unenforceable, so if anybody wants to go up there for whatever other purpose, there it is, it's basically functioning all the time, right? So, it would have to, to a noise study.
Okay, so, I'll talk to the, to the rabbi and the board about that. Regarding the balconies, the intent was to provide a balconyette for ventilation off of the vestibules facing the street, but again, in effort to reduce expenses, we're studying the removal of those balconies. So, it'll be completely sealed on the upper floors. If IFIS is not permitted, it will be replaced. And lastly, Commissioner Chanda, you, you asked why the synagogue couldn't be used as a classroom space as well?
The Torah study room.
Oh, the Torah study room?
Yeah, which is on the... On the second floor. So, the music studio is in one, the, that room is, that floor has music studio and a Torah study room and a library and a computer room. And since the program stated that the Torah study timing doesn't, is not at the same time as the classrooms are held, my question was, why couldn't the Torah study room be subdivided into two classrooms and, and serve a multipurpose use?
Understood. Sir, may I understand the question? I'll have that addressed as well in our written submission.
Okay. Then, I also had a, I wanted another, the elevations of the other sides, right?
Yes, we'll have that included in the proposed plans.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from anybody? Anything else you wanted to add? No? Are there any speakers on this? Okay, all right then. What do we think? How much time to do all of this?
We can have this all to the board within... Thank you for asking.
End of August submission, what's the second?
We can have it all to the board the week of August 19th.
Oh, that, that's nice, but we can't accommodate that? Okay. Let's try the next one, the 22nd. Oh, yeah. Yeah, let's, I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
So, the next available spot is October 22nd, or submission October 7th?
Sorry.
Okay, so, October 2nd submission?
Yes.
October 22nd, public hearing. If that's a we, that's available, we'll take it.
You know, just a reminder, this, this case was submitted in 2017 and sat around with no response from applicant, so must not be a rush. Okay. So, holiday issues, Jewish holiday issues. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
That's all, here you go. Is it? Okay. Item number 3, 2019-40BZ, 175179 East 73rd Street, Manhattan. Okay, everybody raise their hand, right hand? No, you raise your right hand first, I can come, get that out of the way. That's it? Okay. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond on to state board member questions?
Yes.
Okay. Is your assistant, you gonna set up? Oh, it's just gonna press, right?
October 22nd.
All we have to do is press the button right on that one? Okay, good, cool.
That's the hearing, October 2nd, I believe, with submission.
What happened? Ooh, you okay? Oh, so the rabbi won't be on the call. Jane, what do we have? So, Jewish holiday? Yeah, see, that's what I thought.
Good afternoon, Chair Perlmutter, commissioners, my name is Jay Segal. I'm an attorney with Greenberg-Trower, and I am the applicant here. We are going to respond to the questions that the board raised at yesterday's review session. Several of us are going to respond to it. I'm going to just start and do the first few. There was a question raised about the board wanted the documents pursuant to which the Landmarks Preservation Commission approved our design and our revised design. My colleague, Dan Eggers, sent them to the board yesterday.
Yeah, we received them, thank you.
Okay. There was a question about whether we would have a refrigerated, that we should have, refrigerated trash storage. Drawing A100 shows we have a trash storage room. We will amend the drawing to provide that it will be refrigerated trash storage room.
They're usually kind of a small container, right, that you put in the storage room, because it's a large storage room, so, small-ish container.
Another ques, the last question I think I'm handling for a while was, had to do with the four-space off-street parking shortfall, and whether that was due to the, to, whether it was due to the synagogue, it actually is not, it's a, it occurs during midweek, when there won't be very many people to synagogue, it occurs because of the elimination of the parking garage.
Okay, so no matter what use this was converted to, residential or whatever, it would have caused that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then the next question is one that, we're treating as the next question, that's necessarily how you raised it chronologically, it has to do with the need for the two elevator banks, and that Jason Long will, of OMA, will discuss why we need two elevators.
Mm-hmm. See your name for the record?
Jason Long, partner with OMA, architect. Thank you. We have included two elevators in the design of the synagogue for a number of reasons. The first is estimated waiting times, given the population of both the sanctuary space and program spaces on the upper levels of the building, that we believe requires, requires two elevators. The second, and maybe more important, is redundancy. Of course, these elevators are providing access for disabled or elderly members of the congregation or other visitors to the synagogue, and should one of the elevators need to be serviced, or for some other reason not be usable, having two, of course, provides redundancy and ensures that they will still be able to access the spaces on the upper level. So, while we imagine many users of the synagogue to use the main stair for access to the sanctuary space, where we're very conscious that many people will need to, of course, access it via elevator, and we don't want to have times when they wouldn't be able to do so.
One, I think, reason for the question is, we see many, many, many synagogues, and with the exception of very large ones, which this isn't, we only ever see one elevator. That's the reason for the question. Office buildings being different, right?
Understood. Well, I guess we have, in addition to the actual sanctuary space, two levels above that sanctuary space that houses a kind of flexible event space, and then also office space, in addition to the rooftop. So, while we're not imagining many moments when that would, they would all be used simultaneously, there are, noting the way that we see other synagogues being used, often in a kind of broader plate, times when multiple populations would be using it for different.
That's generally the case with these other smaller synagogues, that we see too, that there's study rooms and activity rooms also, but I don't really have a problem with the second elevator, that's...
No, I think my question was trying to understand the need for it, and...
I mean, it's act, go ahead.
Yeah. I think programmatically, as I see it, currently you have this existing shaft, which is there for the elevator, and almost you're kind of taking that and you're rotating that footprint in some ways, and adding a little bit for the staircase.
Yes.
So, that's kind of the way I see it, but I was also trying to see programmatically how, why it is needed. As pointed out, we often don't see more than one elevator for a synagogue or place of worship of this size. But in terms of how it would minimize the waiver, I don't think it would make that much of a difference, given that you have an existing extension in the rear, so...
It would basically create one recess, right? So, create an odd recess. That's really the only thing that you could use to put a chaise longue in or something. I don't know. Yeah. I mean, it's, you know, I have to say that usually the kinds of houses of worship that we see on this scale are by groups that often don't have much money. They're, they, and so, this is obviously a better funded group, and maybe that's why they can handle the cost of the second elevator. Sometimes we have to persuade them to install an elevator, so that's the other part. And I think there was also a question from Commissioner Shaveta about congregant numbers?
We're not finished yet.
Ah, okay.
We're just temporarily finished with Jason's part.
The roof, oh, yeah.
There were a couple of questions raised about numbers and about the Phase Two, and I think Aron is going to respond to this.
Right, and also rooftop use?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay, sorry.
We have the rabbi here for that one.
All right, so, in terms of...
State your name, please.
Aron Kirsch with the Moinian Group, I'm representing the congregation. So, in terms of the addresses, we have a team of people who have gone through all of the addresses, and to date, as of today, we have 579 addresses in Manhattan, and we have 111 in addition to that, that are in the larger New York City metropolitan area.
879, you said?
579.
Five, sorry, 579.
Of the 579, 518 have addresses, and there are 61 additional family members that were part of the 579 that were listed on as part of an address as an additional family member. So, those 61 didn't have necessarily a breakout of their particular address, because they were with a family member.
Okay, I noticed some of the addresses were non-residential buildings.
We asked them for their mailing address, the one that they prefer, the one that they like on record, so that could be why some of them are non-residential buildings. I'm happy to, of course, talk to the congregants and have that updated if they're willing to share their residential address.
I'm not sure if that's necessary, but...
No. Go ahead. I think that number, was that a significant number?
It depends, that the first, during the first trial analysis, it was the numbers over 700, and then subsequent letters said, let's count it at like 500 or 400 in 91, around there. So, I'm not, they're not necessarily being very hardline about what they've identified as congregants, but they're suggesting that what they need is a number that's smaller than what they've identified.
But, so, with the current congregation that meets elsewhere, that size is, what again?
Well, the rabbi can answer, that size is much smaller, because that's not a, it's not a space.
Right, they're meeting in a borrowed space, right?
You know, the congregation kind of fits the size of the space, and a lot of people are going to come to fit into a very small area.
But for like, for high holy days, that, isn't that representative of everybody who would participate? No?
No, not at all. I wasn't sure, I understood, Commissioner Shaveta's comment, it's a, I think we're pretty firm that we have 500, and I guess it grew by three, but 576 to 579 people who live in Manhattan, who said they attend regularly, and another 199 who live in the greater metropolitan area, but not necessarily Manhattan, who also said they would be attending regularly. And then, what I think we said is that we checked the list to make sure there weren't any duplications, because they did come from two different petitions. And the list that we turned in, and those numbers reflect pruning it to make sure that the same people weren't on two lists. That was one of, several things that you asked about.
And the names came from personal knowledge of people who would be interested in attending but can't, because the current space is too small?
Well, the lists also do include the people who are attending the current space.
Right.
And also, yes, the lists that Joe Moinian knows from, he's a trustee of this congregation, and that he's a member of two Iranian Jewish organizations, and he distributed a petition to those people in those organizations that he knew. That's where these, this number comes from.
Okay. Okay.
So, I think there's another question that you were going to address.
Right. So, the Phase Two environmental review. We have a Phase Two that has been completed. The report will be ready by the end of this week. The Phase Two determined that, yes, there is a 500-gallon underground gasoline tank that was on the site. In addition, it found that there were two other tanks that are in a portion of the site. So, as part of the future work on the site, we'll, of course, be excavating and removing of those tanks in the appropriate manner. There is fill material that was identified between three and six and a half feet below grade. The fill contained metals and pesticides, some of which were above the threshold, so that would be, of course, part of any soil cleanup. And there were, there was one soil sample that contained some traces of petroleum, so that would be addressed as part of the soil cleanup as well. There were no impacts of groundwater identified. And then, there was, again, one vapor sample that was detecting tetrafluorotyline, and that would be addressed with the waterproofing membrane.
Okay. But not a subslab depressurization, just a membrane?
Just a membrane, correct.
Okay. So, but that's all going to be submitted on Friday or something?
Friday or Monday, right.
Okay, all right. And the hasp also, right?
Hasp as well.
Okay. So, you know, you have an option, depending on how the EAS responds, to go, I don't know if it's something necessary, an E designation, or this is to speed up the turnaround? This is something you can discuss? Yeah, right. And also, there were comments on air quality, right? We just got a sign off today. Oh, you got a sign off? Oh, okay. We sent that to Dan.
There's also DOT that's open.
Can you speak louder?
There's also DOT that's open.
DOT.
Which we sent, yours. Materials on July 10th, so...
Okay, all right.
And then... We don't have a sign up on noise.
Yeah, I know.
On noise, well...
It's in the first letter. It's like...
It, when DEP reviewed it, was DEP aware of the roof usage?
They didn't study the roof, from what I saw, from what I recall, so...
So, so, that's, then we go back to the question about the roof and its use?
Yes, there's, yes. And we have Rabbi Rosen here to address a little clarification about the day synagogue and about the roof usage.
Okay. Do you want to sign in first, and then I'll swear your name? Down. Yeah, yes. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth in your testimony before the board and to respond honestly to board member questions? Please proceed.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Rabbi Jeremy Rosen. Despite my English accent, I am the rabbi of the Persian synagogue here in New York, largely because of Persian schoolchildren who were once in my purview when I was the headmaster of a school in England. I came to New York to retire, and this is what has happened to me. I don't want to bore you by going into the whole question of the history of the Persian Jewish community. It's the most recent of the Oriental Jewish communities, and as a result, we are the least established, and we have been living in very cramped accommodation, which can barely accommodate our normal Saturday morning community, but when there's any bigger event like a bar mitzvah or a wedding or anything like that, it can't, and so people tend to go elsewhere. We also, it's been mentioned, for the high holy days and for festivals or any special occasion, we have to use the gym in Park East, which is hardly the most conducive, and without official membership, we have something approaching 300 who come on these special occasions. But most of the Persians in New York have tended to go to other Oriental communities, like the Syrians and the Moroccans, because we haven't been able to offer them the facilities. And the result is that now that we have come out with the possibility of a community, they are very enthusiastic and expressing phenomenal interest over and above the lists that you already have. But the real issues that I want to address specifically are those that were raised by you. First of all, the shul. This is an unusual term. In America, it's common to call these synagogues or temples. The old-fashioned world borrowed this old German expression from school, meaning shul. And in most of the Orthodox communities, we have two sanctuaries. It's not unlike the fact that in a cathedral or a church, you will have a nave on the one hand, and you will have the little chapels on the side. So, we have the big sanctuary for the major occasions, but we have daily prayers. Even on Sabbath, we don't always go into the main sanctuary. We come to have these smaller groups, and that's why we need for regular use this small sanctuary, which is much more personal, much more accommodating than the big, more formal one, that is the 400 and upward seater. So, that explains why this is so significant to us in relation to the main one, and also why, frankly, we need this very big sanctuary, because it's clear that the interest is phenomenal and above expectation. The other thing I want to express is what we're doing on the roof. You might be aware of the fact that there's one festival called Tabernacles. On the Tabernacles Festival, which is eight days in the autumn, we are commanded to eat all our meals in the tabernacle. Of course, when it's raining, where I come from, it almost invariably is, it's very rare we actually get to do this, but that's the ideal. And we would want to erect a very temporary branch, leaves, and a few stanchions, under which those who wanted to, and wouldn't be very many, 30 maximum, would come and eat during their daytime meals during that occasion. On the roof, there'd be no noise, no music, no disturbance to anybody else. The only other occasion that we would see using it significantly would be for weddings. Not that we have very many weddings, as we grow, that we may, but a normal religious wedding consists of the chuppah. The chuppah is this canopy. This canopy ideally is under the sky, not in the synagogue itself, and the only noise, other than the rabbi speaking longer than he needs to, was the procession coming in or going out at the end, which might have light musical accommodation, which might be conceivably for 20, I'd be surprised if it, that occasions during the year. The most other use we might have is of a private reception, if the weather is nice, if it's not either too hot or too cold, but again, that would be such a rarity, I don't think it would be a significant feature or factor. So, what I really want to, and this might sound a little excessive, to beg you to look favorably on this. For 30 years, we've tried to find somewhere on the Upper East Side, and we've not been able to. This is a wonderful opportunity for us, but we need the size, and I beg you, please, to approve.
Okay. Begging isn't necessary, you're an applicant, you make a case, that's how it's done. In terms of the use of the roof, then, the EAS is not mentioning that the roof is to be used, and so, and so there's no noise study that's been done, and as was pointed out yesterday, I believe by Commissioner Chanda, there are sensitive receptors nearby, so we need to see what kind of noise attenuation might be necessary, and of course, there would be no amplified sound and no lighting on the roof, which might put a dent in some of the activities. Okay, so, we do need to have that studied, okay?
Okay.
And the EAS has to be amended, assuming the studies turn out to be what you had in mind?
Understood.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody? Okay, are there any speakers on this case? No? All right. Are there any speakers who wish to speak? Oh, there's somebody who wishes to speak. Please raise your, I'm sorry, raise your hand. Please come forward, you will have, state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes. Mr. Pantelitis, do you come by?
Mr. Pantelitis.
Now, you're not this morning? No, sir. Come sign first, and then you'll apply. I saw it, okay. I think I forwarded it to the commissioner, she has to, this morning. Go ahead, you have three minutes. Did the commissioners receive, we sent some comments, letters, forward them this morning? No, this morning, I didn't see that.
It was, I thank the board for giving me this opportunity to express my opinion.
State your name, please.
My name is James Pantelitis, and I reside at 173 East 73rd Street, with my family since 2004. I live on a very special block, and I have two buildings next to me, which are rowhouses, and 175 is one of the rowhouses. I have looked over the proposed plans, and quite a few times, that went also to the community board meeting, and I absolutely have no objections to what the proposed plans and changes are. The facade of the parking lot and the 175 are tired and need, are in disrepair, so the proposed changes will enhance the appearance of the block. I do, however, have one objection, and that objection is losing a rear yard and green space, which is my neighbor, and that's a 20 by 30 application for a variance for a one-story, 600-square-foot extension on the rear of 175. This is, this is happening in many neighborhoods in New York City, where community facilities are purchasing mid-block townhouses, and then we lose another garden to a community facility. We saw this happen right up the block from us, with the Buckley School, where they purchased two mid-block townhouses on the south side, when they were... two mid-block townhouses on the south side, when they were converted to a school, and the ground floor was built full lot line, where, again, we lost two gardens on the Upper East Side. As I, as I said, I looked at the plans, and I'm looking at 600 square feet in relation to the total, the total scope of this project and what 600 feet really means, and I'm kind of hoping that the smart minds in this room will figure out an alternative use of how 600 feet could be incorporated within either the parking lot or the existing 175 building. I'm trying to figure out what the use is of that 600 feet. I saw from the plans that there's a proposal for a one-story, 21-foot or 23-foot structure with skylights above, and I don't see any mechanical or staircases below the garden. So, as I, as I said, I have absolutely no objections, other than that one concern, and I would appreciate if we could discuss that or have the architects explain what the 600 feet is.
So, I'm a little confused. So, the application, the addition, if I'm understanding correctly, to the existing row house building that's going to be part of the synagogue?
That's correct.
That's as of right?
That's as of right.
So, they're not even before us for that. They could do that without coming to us. They're asking, because it's below the 23-foot maximum height, what they're coming to us for is, on the garage building, there's an existing car elevator that extends very far into the rear yard, which they're going to remove, and they're going to pull back from that and install passenger elevators that are eight feet, or seven feet back from the property line, which is not adjacent, which is on the other side of the townhouse, right? So, and because the elevator is not a permitted obstruction, as it were, they have to come to us to get that.
No, I understand that.
Right? So, whether or not they were here, they could add that 23-foot height.
That extension is then as of right, that they're, they could do that.
Right. So, what I just want to suggest is that perhaps you, if you haven't already met with them, meet together.
We have.
And discuss it. But it's really, that's kind of outside of our domain because they could sort of turn around tomorrow and do that.
I, I, I look back at a time when I bought my home, which was Tony Rosenthal's house, and I went to the community board and had all my approvals done for the facade, which was landmark, and as far as my rear yard, I was advised by the community board at that time that I should try to maintain a certain symmetry and landscape to reflect what was there 100 years ago. And that's what I'm seeking, if there's any possibility, that as the, as the board, if you are able to recommend any changes for us. Again, it's a 600-square-foot extension.
All right. But so, and I'm a little confused also. I think it's the landmarks commission that maybe, that you're thinking of. So, landmarks commission is...
They had, you had landmarks approval.
Yeah, they have landmarks approval. So, the landmarks commission is, who's concerned with the development in what they call the donut, right? And looking at the relationship of that, the buildings around, and whether the donut should be maintained, right? So, I'm assuming that was an argument that was made at landmarks commission about whether it's okay to extend at the townhouse level into, into the, what there is of the donut, which has been, it seems like obstructed quite a lot based on the figure of ground situation.
Also, of the 600 square feet, I think some percentage of it is already existing encroachment that is beyond the permitted zoning. So, that in totality, the number, the amount of square footage that is being requested as an addition to what is existing is less than the 600 square feet because there is already the, this is a very old building. This was pre-zoning, and much of the existing build, a good portion of the existing building is already beyond what today's zoning would allow. So, they're seeking a waiver on that portion also. So, the total number of square footage you're requesting, you're mentioning does reflect that number also.
There is that.
So, I think, apart from the fact that the light, the space that's being added in the rear of the townhouse, it's an as of right. That's not what they're requesting, the variance. They only requested variance that they're seeking on that, the townhouse portion is what's already exceeding today.
Okay. Then I have no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Anybody else to speak on this case?
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak from the public? No?
There's public who just walked in. So, this is 175 East 73rd Street.
You want to speak? Please come forward. Please state your name.
My name is Bruce Knect, unusual spelling, K-N-E-C-H-T. I live at 168 East 74th Street. I'm a member of the board, and I'm the chairman of a subcommittee of the board, which has met many times with the sponsors of this proposal. We're the building that's most affected by this proposal. We are directly opposite both the garage and, and the townhouse. The garage is the aspect that affects us the most. The garage is 40 feet wide. An 11-foot-wide section of that portion now extends to within three feet of the, I want to make sure I got that right, three feet of the property line. The majority of the garage, which is 29 feet, is 22 feet and 8 inches away from the property line. And now, what they're proposing, as you well know, is for everything to come within seven feet. That, of course, is 14 feet closer than, than the bulk of it, and that would seem to be a very bad thing for our building. It is a bad thing for our building. We would much prefer, in an impossible world, that it was at the 30 feet that the zoning asked for, which we don't have now. It would be better if they had the setbacks, if that's the right term for it, that they, that they have currently. So, you may ask, why have we decided to support the proposal? We have for two reasons, basically. One is, we were led to believe that it would be rather difficult to oppose a, a house of worship when it comes before a board like this because of zoning precedence. Just as important, we met with the sponsor, and we came up with a compromise on the design of the facade that is an improvement on the, their original proposal. It's an improvement for a couple of reasons. It's also an improvement over what we have now. What we have now, I assume you can all see the pictures, is the corrugated steel, which, by the way, is not what was there initially. When this garage was built in 1906, that was the elevator, it was the cladding. The inside, it was some ceramic tile, and the outside was brick. Apparently, the fasteners in those days didn't work very well, so the brick crumbled, and at some point, before we bought our apartment in 1992, the brick crumbled, and they just put up this, this metallic corrugated steel, the cheapest alternative possible. So, the solution that I guess you can also see shows a, an all-brick facade with, with lintels and stone sills and windows that have muttons, and a brick that is, that they've agreed that we will have the right to be involved in the selection of, that looks residential. It looks a lot better than the steel. So, while we, you know, we're not happy about it coming, the building coming so much closer to us because it affects the, what we see unfortunately out of our living rooms and our dining rooms, the most important rooms of our apartment, and the dining rooms, in many cases, have become dens. It will have a profound effect on, on the light. But overall, given the alternatives, we are happy with the change of facade, so we've agreed to support the proposal.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to speak? In favor or opposed to the application? Going once, going twice?
Okay. We did have some letters, which, like, how many letters in support or opposite?
Well, one, a couple in favor and one was opposed.
Okay. I just want to acknowledge those letters. Okay. Two opposing and two, three opposing?
Two opposing, I have it as two opposing letters regarding pedestrian and traffic.
Including Mr., you also received Mr. Pantalitis's letter.
Oh, I did, I found that.
No, so those, which he's referring to. Okay.
Just to say for the record, what the board already knows, because it's probably the first time I've ever gotten it, we have unanimous community board aid approval.
That's the first time you've ever got a unanimous approval?
From community board aid, yes.
Oh.
So, that...
Interesting.
Counts for some, you know, support and favor. I, I don't know how much time we need. We'd like to, you know from the prior back and forth we've had, we're very anxious to move this to a conclusion. I don't know whether, we have any information yet from, no. A K R F has been trying to email the noise experts at A K R F to find out how quickly we can respond, because we do want to do it quickly to try to come back before you.
What do you mean, the prior back and forth we've had? I don't know what you mean.
You wanted a noise study, and we don't know how long that's going to take. A K R F is here, and they've been emailing their experts back at the shop as to how long it'll take to...
And they don't know?
Not yet. I trust that since they're very quick, that hopefully we can get something to you a lot quicker than, I, within, I, I'm fairly sure we can get something within a month.
Okay. I'm just looking at if there's any, I'm just looking to see whether there are any, any materials that we need to, we, the board, needs to review. If it's just environmental, it has an effect on when it goes on our calendar. I don't see anything that we need to review. It seems like it's just environmental questions. So, I don't know. You have to do the noise study, so that's something that A K R F is in charge of deciding? How long it takes them to do what they have to do? They have to, and then we also have, sorry?
And then get comments, right?
And get comments? And then, we also had air, we got the air quality, you need to, the turnaround of the Phase 2 and the hasp, which we don't have yet, right?
Yeah, we said we could do this Friday or Monday, give you the Phase 2.
Right, but then it's a D E P turnaround. It's August. I'm assuming a little bit of vacation on the part of people who might be involved in this. So, I don't, I don't know. Like, early, late? So, I guess it doesn't really matter how many we have, so I need a little sense. So, if you submit the noise study in two weeks, for argument's sake, right, that would be mid-August. So, then you're 30 days from the, for D E P, that's mid-September for them to have a turnaround, assuming they're happy with it, right? So, I would say an early, maybe October 3rd?
Okay. That's a Thursday. Your submission will be due by September 11th. The sooner you get those studies, the better.
Right. So, the study should, everything to do with environmental, you should be turning around constantly? And I don't, and there's no submissions relative to the variance findings, right? Okay?
So, I'm...
Got that?
What?
I'm sorry. Do you need to add a note to the plan regarding the noise attenuation or anything?
They, they will once we know what it is, right? So...
Based on the existing study already?
So, we didn't get a noise response?
Oh, no. Okay.
We didn't, we didn't get D E P sign off on noise?
No, we did, but it...
We did get...
But they had it accommodated, they had it captured for the roof.
Right. Oh, did get, okay. Right.
But did not require any window wall attenuation for the existing one, not for the roof, for the building itself.
So, I don't know. Is there attenuation required under the noise study? We'll find out. So, whatever the notes are, has to be added. Do you want to come? Yeah. But they may have to add attenuation on the roof. Oh, trash enclosure.
It just says that it will not... You have to be sworn in. Just raise your hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board to respond honestly to all member questions?
Good afternoon. My name is Alex Leber. I'm a planner with A K R F. As Jay mentioned, we prepared the E A S for this project. I am following up on the question about a noise study for the rooftop. So, I don't have an answer to that question yet, but your question about attenuation, window wall attenuation. We did the noise study. It was submitted to D E P. It did, found that there were no issues with existing noise. It's a very low traffic area. The street is relatively quiet under existing conditions, so we did not have any required attenuation for the building.
All right. Thanks. So, but in terms of modification to, well, the E A S, it has to respond to whatever the results of the noise study are, and then, then the other part of it is, and the fact of use of the roof, right? But then the other, which is in A K R F, but in general, the drawings need to reflect the trash storage, the refrigerated trash, right? So, in terms of a submission date, that's what you would find on the submission date, reflecting whatever it is, is concluded in the noise study that has to show on the plan. So, for example, if the noise study concludes that it's possible to attenuate the noise by, for the use of the roof, for the purposes stated by the rabbi, then, which assumes therefore, regular use of the roof, because you can't talk about it only being used occasionally, because it's just not regulable, if that's a word, then that needs to be added to the drawings and mentioned in the E A S that that's going to be handled, and then also the trash, refrigerated trash. Okay?
Including the note you mentioned about no amplification, according to...
Yes, no amplification and no lighting.
No lighting. I mean, no beyond safety lighting, I got, whatever.
Yeah. Emergency light.
Oh, and the mechanical, yeah, good point. So, there are two roofs. So, the one, a roof over the parking garage, which you're proposing to use for various religious festivities, and then there's the mechanical terrace that's on top of the townhouse, which I'm assuming you're not proposing to use for any extension of any programs of any, any sort.
Correct.
Okay. I think, just to be on the safe side and be clear, that that, there should be a note added to that, indicating that it should not be used for any purposes other than being just a mechanical terrace.
Understood.
Maybe a door should be just an exit door and not for anything else.
Understand.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got it? All right. You got the dates?
October 3rd, submission September 19th.
11th, sorry. September 11th, yeah. Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes the public hearing for January, July 23rd.
September 11th.
September 11th is the submission, and October 3rd.
3rd.